No one will be allowed to speak. Can everyone please stand for the salute?
Anthony Forbes?
Here.
Andrew Masato?
Present.
Aaron Lewis?
Here.
Barbara Rans?
Here.
Michael Russo? President. James Sanford? Erica Sykes?
Present.
I would like to advise those present that notice of this regular meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken has been provided to the public in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting Thursday, December 8, 2022 was given by publication of the annual meetings notice of the authority. With amendments as necessary was sent to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on Tuesday, November 29th, was sent to the City Clerk of Hoboken on Tuesday, November 29th, 2022, with a copy of the agenda to be posted on Bolton Board, on the Bolton Board in City Hall, Hoboken Library, and Hoboken Police Department, and posted on the authority website on Tuesday, November 29th, 2022. I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Patricia Waiters?
I'm sorry, is the public portion?
Yes, public portion. Before, before we start the public portion, I just want to remind everyone that please address me directly as the chair. If I ask you guys to please be respectful of the staff, the commissioners, and the director. And lastly, if you guys would like to speak with management, director, or the director regarding any particular situation, I advise you to make an appointment. This is not the place or the time to do that in public, so we can discuss that. You can set up an appointment with the director or the management to do so. Okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to what you just said. Oh, my name is Patricia Waiters, like a waiter in a restaurant. W-A-I-T-E-R-S. You want me to spell Patricia too? Okay, thank you. With respect to that being said, Madam Chair, I really appreciate you giving that statement every meeting, but with it, with me, I don't think it necessary. I mean, we all on our own opinion, I'm very respectful to everybody, but it goes both ways, okay? So sometimes the people on the board can say some very uncomfortable things to get us a little emotional here, and with respect to this being a public meeting, we shouldn't have to privately meet with administration. I have did, and I had nothing but failed attempts. That's why I feel more comfortable placing it on the record in case a lawsuit or something come out of what I'm saying, because people quick to say if you don't have proof. Okay, so sometime it helps to put it on the record. If you read the Sunshine Meeting Laws, it's best to have it in your minutes. Am I going too fast, because I want this in my minutes? It's best to have it in the minutes, because according to me, standing up here all the time, coming out of my way, I'm a little hurt because you see me on the phone, I got here at 6 o'clock, I lie to you not, and I called over 13 residents that want to come so bad, Ms. Chair, and they afraid of retaliation, okay? And then they afraid of saying, you got management, people doing illegal stuff in management. Okay, the allegations, or let's put that word out there, that's coming to me. I've been serving my community forever, forever, and I'm not gonna stop regardless to this. And I told y'all last night, Council President, I addressed the city council and said shame on all of y'all, because they put y'all here. The city council voted you and Barbara with confidence. The city council voted my friend here, my friend up until they voted him in and tried to do the old oil and water trade. I love Tony dearly, because I'm gonna sit back and watch and make sure since they gave him the chair, hold him accountable when I become the NAACP president, because stuff gotta be done. It don't have to be ignored. I don't stand up here to be mean, I don't stand up here to make friends, I stand up here because business is business. All of that housing is being built, and y'all go after the free toys and the cookies back in the hood, Ms. Segman. And that's another thing I'm gonna wrap it up saying. That flyer is very offensive. I took offense to it. I don't care if you name your organization The Hood, The Black Panthers, The Supremacy, whatever you want to name it, but to say The Hood, say neighborhood then, be a little more professional, because people took that to heart like me. And then when you said Hood on a flyer, and it's supposed to rain Saturday, the city continue to give that party outside for our kids when you got three recreation centers that you could fix up in here and bring them kids inside like they do the Elks Club with coffee and chocolate and have Santa Claus inside. So shame on you to keep coming down here with your toy scan, the free food. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, you know I'm really sorry, because you be involved, and I thank you in hopes to know, because you live here. That's why I respect you out of everybody else on this board, because they just say anything, and at the end of the day, they go home, they not in the hood, okay? And it bothers me. Your kids gotta still grow up here, I'm seeing it in the school district, I'm seeing it in Hoboken, it's time to stop. Believe me, I'm not standing up here to be mean, I'm standing up here to call a facts. I have you facts, like I told you. Thank you too for pulling me aside, being professional. I have facts. I'm talking about people's experience. When you experience racism, ain't no such thing as show proof. I have all the proof you guys need. Again, commissioners, and I'm counting on all of you, where's Mr. Sanford? Are you kidding me? I'm counting on all of you to address the systemic racism that's embedded in our city's bloodline that gotta stop, okay? Even though he wrote that little racist thing talking about coming down here, seizing at election time, you know why he wrote it? Because he did it. He did it, and it shouldn't be allowed. Your voices count, your votes count, I'm gonna ask again, I'm done. Please, I'm asking, and I went, thank you. Here go the proof, and I got my timestamp from Newark on the 13th floor, I went to HUD, and I'm not giving HUD my info to call back and be friends with Mark Recco and everybody play cover up and this be under the blanket. This is exposed. I want to follow through again, Madam Chair, I want to follow through with a thorough, independent forensic investigation, like they did for Carmelo, the same investigation they did with Carmelo, anybody linked to it, anybody have any affiliation, knowing that that list was being tampered with, knowing that your family members got a voucher, never on the list, these not allegations, they facts. So again, let's meet together, okay, I'm giving you an opportunity, I'm calling Mr. Smith, let's meet together and let's get this out and get it corrected. I don't want nobody to go to jail, but playing like this, y'all got the right one. Patricia Waiters, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters.
Have a good night.
Mr. Bronco? Joe Bronco?
B-R-A-N-C-O. It'd be hard to follow that, but good evening, Chairwoman, Director, Commissioners, and Housing Authority residents. My name is Joseph Bronco, I'm actually, I live at 635 Bloomfield Street in Hoboken, and I am the Chairman of the Republican Party for Hoboken. I came here to address a bunch of issues that one of your commissioners basically put out there and attacked me and made some libel and defamatory claims against me, so I'd like to set the record straight, so that everybody's on the same page here. October 17th, James Sanford wrote an email out, signing his name as the Housing Authority Commissioner, and it reads as follows. Please see attached letter addressed to you and your candidates for the Hoboken School Board, requesting you sign a seven-point election integrity pledge. Please note that I was not able to find contact information for Mr. James Madigan. In fairness, he has not-
Mr. James-
John Madigan. John Madigan. In fairness, he has not received this letter to request to sign his pledge. If he is actively campaigning, you have his contact information, please let me know. Thank you. Do you want me to wait till he sits down?
You can continue.
Good evening, Commissioner. Anyway, gets and goes on, but at the end it says, lastly, I ask the Kids First candidates to address the behavior of their treasurer and his ties to former Housing Authority Executive Director Carmelo Garcia and his ties to developers. There was two attachments. One attachment is the seven-point pledge, which I'm not gonna read, the other attachment was the election pledge, what do you call it, the breakdown, which is, as a Hoboken Housing Authority Commissioner, I am closely watching this year's local election.
Guys, I'm gonna ask you to please keep it quiet in the audience, thank you.
Many Hoboken Housing Authority residents are served by public school system, therefore I'm calling on Hoboken School Board candidates to sign a seven-point integrity pledge. Unfortunately, unscrupulous developers have a history of interfering in the Housing Authority and corrupting Hoboken elections. And, at the time of this letter, there was no ELEC report filed for Kids-
I'm sorry, there's that-
ELEC, E-L-E-C, report for the Kids First slate and its treasurer, Joseph Bronco. For a fact of the matter is, all of our ELEC reports were filed on time, and if you run for school board, you do not need to fill out an A2 or an A3, the only request in R1 is if you go over the $15,700 committee report, which we didn't go over that up until Election Day, but we did file the R1 seven days prior, and we did not have to file the 48-hour report because we didn't take in any donations over the threshold. And we did file our R2, which was the 20-day post-report, on time, and everything was accounted for, for the record. What's the connection between Housing Authority and Mr. Garcia? The answer is Mr. Bronco, the puppeteer behind Kids First. Several years ago, when Mr. Bronco worked for Garcia, and again, I never worked for the Housing Authority, never worked for Carmelo Garcia, and for those of you that know me in this group, I've been self-employed since 1998. Okay, where was I? He cornered me at an event, and in a slurred rant threatened to find out where I live, how much I make, and defamed, and demanded that if I didn't vote to keep Garcia around, that he'll take everything I owned. Does Mr. Bronco regret his time bullying commissioners into supporting Mr. Garcia? Again, that never happened, and if it did happen, he should have contacted the authorities. Okay, as a commissioner, or he thinks he's a city official, we'll get to that point later, he should have contacted and filed the report. Unfortunately, Bronco literally jumped out of a black SUV at my polling location and tried to stop me from voting in a recent Hoboken election. For most people, voting is simple, but I had to fight for my right to vote on that day. The incident is documented with the Hudson County Board of Elections, and their credit, the HCBE, observed and protected me. When Mr. Bronco approached those observers, called over a police officer and stopped them, I wish I could tell people not to worry if you don't vote for Bronco's candidates, but then again, do I know if Bronco's gonna jump out of another car and try to bully me into, into me voting for his people? James Sanford was on the challenger list during the last fourth ward election. I was one of the campaign managers, when he walked into the polling location, our challenger contacted me, and I said he needs to be challenged for his residency, because again, people do not believe where James lives, okay? So when he was asked to provide his ID in order for him to vote, which is simple if you get challenged, a lot of people know what challengers, their responsibility is, it's not anything against the individual, you're on the challenger list, you basically challenge that person, they have to show proof of residency. He did not want to show his ID at that moment in time, you have two poll workers, poll workers vote whether he should vote or not vote. It was a tie, one person said he should vote, the other person said he should not vote, he was then entitled to vote, okay? So again, he voted, and he claims that that is jumping out of an SUV, I was doing my job as a campaign manager, and basically utilizing the tools of voting as a challenger is supposed to do. We all know we have challengers at every single election, that's why they have the little badges. So everybody followed the proper protocol, and Mr. Stanford was allowed to vote as he's entitled to vote. I wish all of that was in the past, but only two weeks ago, Bronco ambushed me at the Governor's Housing Conference and tried bullying me into giving him the contact information and passwords for a platform that I own. Bronco tried to shake me down like a schoolyard bully demanding milk money, and I, like twice before, said no. I'm not going to let this guy spam my community and political emails bullying people into voting for his candidates who may or may not be indebted to developers. It is imperative to understand who is the money behind Bronco's school board candidates. The money that is behind our candidates, we fundraise, and it's all on the ELEC report, okay? And by the way, I'm not a developer, I'm a landlord, which is different, I've never actually developed any piece of property or parcel. Therefore, since local developers have been convicted-
Sorry, therefore, since local developers?
I, I'm sorry, it's okay.
Therefore, since local developers?
No, no, therefore, not a local, I'm not a local developer.
Okay.
Never developed.
Mr. Bronco, can you just, we have five minutes left.
I, I know that this is, but this is very important, because I just want to address the, the issues, and again, this is from him as a Housing Authority Commissioner, so I know I'm limited to the five minutes, but this all has to basically come out so that I can straighten out the record. Okay. No, I'm sorry, therefore, since local developers have been convicted of paying Housing Authority residents cash for votes, I call upon all school board candidates to sign the election integrity pledge, and call upon all candidates to file their ELEC reports for the public view, which I've done. Now, the platform that I requested, and again, ambushing somebody is walking down Harrah's hallway at a conference and seeing somebody and walking over to the side and saying, can I talk to you, James? We need to, you know, transfer over that page that has the Hoboken Republican Party on it. This page was created in 2014 when James was elected as the Hoboken Chairman of the Republican Party. I have the proof of all that, and I'll submit that to the commissioners that you guys actually see that, and this can go into the record. It clearly identifies James as a chairperson and why he created it. James is a commissioner, he wants everybody to sign an integrity pledge, but yet he doesn't understand the simple transfer of power. If you're a chairperson, and when your time or term is up or you get voted out, anything that you create during that time belongs to the party. It doesn't say the James Stanford Commissioner, Housing Authority, Republican Party, it says the Hoboken Republican Party. Also, as a point of reference, when I became the chairperson, that page was not active since 2015, or 2017, I'm sorry. The time I took possession of the chairmanship, there was 2,705 likes of that page. With all the outreach and the effectiveness of me running the actual party, there's now 3,200 likes on that page. That page is representative of people thinking that that's the party, not James Stanford's personal page. When I asked James for this page over a year ago, the reason why I asked him for the page was because I knew that if something ever happened, James was a type of person, Commissioner Stanford was a type of person to try to weaponize that page, and he did exactly what I thought he was gonna do. On October 31st, Commissioner Stanford weaponized that page, and he put a post- that he writes, "Dear members, I am sharing this story with our community and asking for your support. No one should have to fight for their right to vote on Election Day at the polling station. No one should have their property threatened, but unfortunately, these are my experiences with Hoboken Republican Chair Joseph Bronco. I've tried to move on, but the unwanted threats continue." Republican Chair Bronco is both a developer and a campaign manager for Kids First. When these matters were brought to the attention of Kids First candidates for Hoboken School Board, they ignored their campaign manager's actions. Local media refused to cover this developing story, I wonder why, there's really no story here. Therefore, I've created a new platform to act as an independent journalist, now he's an independent journalist. The Hoboken School Board election and the involvement of real estate developers is merely one crumb in a trail of corruption within our state. As a city official, I swore an oath to protect the Hoboken Housing Authority. You guys are not city officials, there's nothing to do with this city, this is an independent agency sponsored by the federal government. You're appointed by city officials, and you're appointed by the mayor, and you have different appointments, but you're not a city official. And an independent journalist, I will not shy from exploring the truth, and as a New Jersey native who loves our state, I will continue fighting for a better place to live, one we can all be proud of, sincerely, James. Again, that was the Kids First is without integrity. I know, I know my time is up, but I do have all the backup documents for you guys, so that you can have it. And again, if anybody has any questions about my integrity or what I've done for the Housing Authority, probably in the last, I don't know, 15 years, I remember donating the plaque for Mama Johnson Park, so I do remember that.
I'm sorry, I donated, I donated the plaque, I'm sorry.
To Mama Johnson Park, and I'm always here when anytime you guys need me to deliver anything, and the bus trips, I mean, there's so many things that I've done that I don't even keep track of, nor do I take pictures of, because I don't need to, you know, advertise what I do, but you guys know what I do, okay? So if anybody has any questions, you guys, please feel free to reach out to me and let me know. Just one last, one last thing, I do have copies for everybody. I do have a cease and desist from our attorney to Commissioner Stanford, in his person and his official capacity for what he's done, so.
Joe, could you submit that to our-
Hello?
Thank you.
It was also an email to you, Mrs. Stanford. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bronco. Habalos, I'm so sorry. Habalos?
Yep. I'd just like to clarify something, Chair. Am I being served, or was the Housing Authority being served?
Cease and desist. You individually.
So is it appropriate for counsel to accept such a letter?
Yes. As soon as our lawyer, Matt, would you like to answer that? I'm not a lawyer, I can't tell you.
Sure. I mean, I haven't read through the whole thing, but it sounds like this is directed at Commissioner Stanford in his personal capacity, not in his capacity as a position of the Housing Authority, so I am not, I am not accepting anything. First of all, it's a cease and desist letter, which is in process, so it's not a matter of service.
Would you like me just to give it to him, excuse me?
So, I was actually gonna point that out, that this is directed towards Commissioner Stanford, so the Housing Authority is not accepting anything on his behalf, if you'd like to provide it to Mr. Stanford, that's- Madam Chair, I would ask the public not give me anything, I am not accepting-
Just watch, excuse me, just wait, hold on for a second, watch my cord-
This is inappropriate, this is inappropriate. You, for the record, allowed a member of the public to exceed the five minutes.
Yes.
You are not allowing a member of the public to- I have to serve.
I can't, I can't focus. Okay, unfortunately, we're in a public meeting, I cannot do anything to stop that other than if he was gonna serve you before or then, the lawyer said he can't accept it, and you're sitting here, so I'm assuming that it's okay, again, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know, yes, well, okay, so, Matt, could you please clarify that? Did I do something wrong by allowing him to serve him, or?
No, you didn't. I, I don't want to get far into the point where I would be acting in a capacity representing or giving legal advice individually to Commissioner Stanford. My only position is, the Housing Authority does not accept service of anything, whether it's legal process or not, on behalf of Mr. Stanford. I would ask the-
Perfect.
I'm not touching it.
All right, so if it's in cooperation-
It's not how being served works.
If it's a public meeting, you can-
Please, members of the public-
Okay.
Everything has to be done on record, and we ask all the time at these meetings-
And everyone is being professional, Patricia, I don't think that Mr. Stanford is being unprofessional. It's his right to say that he doesn't want to be served, and that's absolutely fine. If you don't want to be served, and you would like the paper to be placed somewhere else, then that's up to you.
It's not a question of want, it's a question of process, this is completely-
It's a question of the want, we pay him out of town.
It appears that you're allowing the public to interrupt previously established well precedent of five minutes for sharing whatever they wish to speak upon, and then allowing the public to engage a Commissioner or Director, I, that's not happening at all.
Okay. If, if I did that, I apologize, if I did something wrong, I apologize to you for that.
I'm just, I'm just, you're the whole Housing Authority for years.
Okay, okay, well, again, this is a public meeting-
Absolutely.
And they have the right to come here and speak and say whatever needs to be said. Unfortunately, it did involve, what was written, did involve the Hoboken Housing Authority, and they felt that this was the best place to address it, and I did ask him to wrap it up, unfortunately, he didn't, but I gave him, you know, a few more minutes to finish it respectfully, and he did. No one was disrespectful at this point. Again, if you don't want the paper, and you don't want to accept it, I think it's on the record, there's nothing further that we can do. Am I correct? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, P-A-D?
P-L, last name S-O-K-O-L-O-E-S. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, sir, just one second, I apologize.
No worries.
Madam Chair, one possible compromise in the situation or way to handle it is, and this has happened in the past, if somebody would like to leave supporting evidence for individual commissioners, maybe we can leave it on tape here, and any commissioner who would like to have a copy of that, would be free to take it from the house.
Okay, so you suggest that the cease, that's based on the-
Yeah. Right, into the future, I like that idea. That, that-
That would be a great idea. I didn't see anything wrong, because the information that he gave was also given to give out to the rest of the commissioners, so I didn't see anything wrong with also providing that to you.
So we have a commissioner with a piece of paper in the bottom.
So what do we do at this point?
Shall I take it? If the commissioner has expressed the fact that he does not wish to- I am not a friend, I recognize the service. That may be appropriate.
Okay.
And again, nothing has been accepted on behalf of the Housing Authority, and again, with respect to the Housing Authority specifically, I'll leave it up to Commissioner Stanford or his personal counsel, this isn't legal process, so it's not a matter of service.
Thank you.
Hi, so for those of you who may know me from other meetings, I like to lapse philosophically during my five minutes, and I will do so again. So first, I want to apologize to everyone for kind of airing our internal dirty laundry at your meeting. It was only our thought process that, because the Hoboken Housing Authority was specifically mentioned as the authority that was issuing that statement, which we now is not true, and I just want to clarify with your attorney that we have no interest or, you know, plans to, you know, serve, blame you guys for that letter. Clearly, it was Commissioner Stanford going rogue, so to speak, and speaking in a capacity that was not his to speak with, which I find it incredibly ironic, because the title of that letter was "A Lack of Integrity," right? And the irony being is that his actions are those that lack integrity. It is not proper to use his failed political career as a formerly elected Republican official in town to basically hijack the Housing Authority to become a political mouthpiece for his own pervert and biased views of what the political process should be, while in fact, I am the Hoboken Republican Secretary, and therefore, the intellectual property that James Stanford claims is his is technically-
Excuse me one second, whoever is listening to something, shut it off, please. I'm sorry about that.
No worries, thank you. Regardless, any intellectual property generated during his capacity as an elected official remains with the party, with myself and Joseph Bronco, retaining authority to use it. I actually met with James at Urban Cole House maybe a year ago and expressed, you know, questions, maybe bring them back in a fold and partner, and he specifically cited his personal anathema towards Joseph Bronco as the issue. There is no real political, procedural, legal issue, it's just the personal dislike, which I personally find very unbecoming of quote-unquote "city official" per Mr. Stanford's own assessment himself. But also, in the second half, I was one of the aforementioned candidates, myself and Ms. Waiters, who was right there, ran for school board this prior November, and I very much did campaign in the Housing Authority, right? I campaigned everywhere, because I thought that everyone has an equal right to, A, hear my and my team's views and be, be heard for their issues and concerns. I find it grossly inappropriate to try to limit First Amendment rights, inability to engage certain voter bases just solely because he himself has appointed himself some kind of arbiter to fight against developers. It was a very strange conversation implying developer money or things that completely aren't true, I mean, I basically fundraised the campaign with friends and family with my own money. That being said, I can only surmise that he has a personal axe to grind, or he was propositioned by someone else from administration, or whoever your person would be holding to, James, and why a page that was inactive for over half a decade suddenly started spewing lies? I really do question the wisdom of the Housing Authority in general, if they allow commissioners to act this way and represent them in a capacity. I think the only recourse truly is to ask James Stanford to resign from his positions and perhaps apologize to me and the general concept of democracy, and of course, give us what is ours. Thank you.
Thank you. A.
Hello, my name, oh, sorry, just fill in. Oh, my first name is Edward, and my last name is Reeve, R-E-E-P, as in heater, so R2E's and an F-P. I will be reading into the record, the cease and desist, I will be reading into the record, the cease and desist letter that was thus discussed. Okay. Dear Mr. Stanford-
Mr. Reeve, could I interrupt you?
Oh, no, of course, no problem, no problem.
Madam Chair, it seems to me, and I don't want to tell you how to do your duty here, but it seems to me that a number of the speakers are addressing something that they have acknowledged does not have anything directly to do with the Housing Authority. As was mentioned last month, and I believe some members of the public were also here last month, this board does not have any say over any sanction having to do with a member of the board itself. That would fall to the appointing authority for said commissioning. So any request for any sort of action should not appropriately be- So, any request for any sort of action should not appropriately be addressed to this board. There is a right of public speak, but I think it would be appropriate to ask that any public comments be on matters concerning the Housing Authority itself directly. And there has been some acknowledgement here that these matters aren't really addressed to the Housing Authority. Now, I understand that they happen to deal with a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority, but they are not directly related to the operations of the Housing Authority, nor are they related to something that the Housing Authority has a say over, or the ability to act over. So, I will leave that to you, whether a request is made that we stick to authority business.
Madam Chair, could I offer a compromise, in the sense of not quelling the public's ability to speak?
And I, right.
Would it be appropriate to just submit the letter into the record, without having to read it into the record, or something in that nature, or would you advise against that as well? And again, not that I'm advocating for one or the other, I just don't want to have to continue to go down this road, because I think you're right, I think we should be dealing with Housing Authority business. If there's a gripe, which there seems to be, it should be taken up with the appropriate appointing authority, which in this case happens to be the Mayor of the City of Hoboken. Your mayor appointment, correct? Yeah. So, it, again, I don't want to stop anybody from speaking, because I sit in a similar position from the council's perspective, and there are times people come up and they just speak about whatever it is that's on their mind, and that's their right. And I'm not saying that you don't have that right, because I do believe that you do, but to try to kind of move our meeting along so that we get to Housing Authority business, I would just offer up some type of compromise like that, where you submit the letter, and that just becomes part of the public record as well.
And I agree with that, that's a good point, Commissioner. I don't want to give the impression that I'm trying to...
No, and I don't think you want...
I just...
I would actually prefer something like that, as a compromise, where we submit it in. Now, if you have any, anything else you would like to speak about concerning the Housing Authority, you can use your five minutes to do so.
Okay, um, should I leave this right here to be...
Right there.
Okay, the letter is thus submitted into the record, and I would just like to echo the comments of my good friends and associates, Joe Bronco and Pavel Sokolov, and to say that we just want to move on with fairness, and, you know, working together for the betterment of the city, and the more we can put behind any, like, disputes behind us and work to help people, that's good. So, thank you so much, love and peace. I was gonna try to do a dramatic reading, but it's okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Luis Larrero?
Thank you.
Okay.
Could you just spell your name, please? I'm sorry.
Luis Larrero, M-A-R-R-E-R-F.
A-R-O or E-R?
M-A-R-R-E-R.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm not that big. I'm not that tall. Okay. My question to the board is, on the policy that we just received on the 10 o'clock curfew, and the only question that I had was, okay, now for the summer, we usually sit in front of the building with our children, while our children are playing basketball and whatnot. Okay, sometimes we do go a little bit above the 10 o'clock. I know that it's a 10 o'clock curfew, but what I'm saying is, it's the summer, like, why are we limited to only 10 o'clock? I know that, you know, we're not hanging out, we're just letting the kids play, because they're out of school and whatnot, so I just had a question about it, and I wanted to put it on the record, as to, is this permanent, or is there another solution that we could go through? Because I do sit with my grandkids while they play basketball, or the other one, the baby plays in the park, and it's a summer day, it's a beautiful day, we don't want to be cooped up in the house. So, is this something that we're gonna stick to having at a 10 o'clock, or is, in the future, we could do it up to 12 or 11?
Madam Chair, Director, I know that you don't normally engage in a back-and-forth with members of the public. This was discussed...
That went out the window tonight.
This was discussed, right, this was discussed at length last meeting, and it was addressed, and I think it's an important point. So I think it would be perfectly appropriate if one of you wanted to just give a brief explanation of the nature of the policy, and whether it's subject to change.
And I think I can set the background a little bit, with number one, if you don't mind, your person, the, everything's subject to change, of course, as this goes along. And I think we've experienced at this Housing Authority and around this board, some real problems this past summer that cannot continue. We need to find a way, as a community, together, to solve these problems. And if it turns out that the 10 o'clock is too early, we can certainly take a look at that as summer comes, but I do believe that it's important that we be, send a message out that we are serious. This idea of people being on our property, partying, and doing the things that are, just can't be. And, and, great, let's have fun until, our concept, I think, we'll just have a great time until 10 o'clock, there's a time to go home. And that was the concept in this, and I think it's very important that we continue this discussion, and we'll continue this discussion at the Rap Board, at community meetings, but I think we had to set the line somewhere, and I think our best counsel was the 10 o'clock, let's go home and keep a quiet summer, so kids can go to sleep, and adults can go to bed and get up and go to work in the morning, and we will have a quiet and safe place at night. That was our rationale. So I don't want to add anything to that, but I think that's where we're coming from.
I think, you know, you and I had a conversation, and I did say that things are subject to change. Nothing is set in stone, but unfortunately, and I've said this before, due to the recent actions and things that have happened on the Housing Authority, we must take action. And this is a start. This is a start to prevent things that have happened in the past from continuing to happen. We want everybody to have a good quality of life down there, and I think everyone deserves that. And, you know, I, as the Director stated, we're going, this is going to be an open discussion. I think every commissioner here, when we were discussing this policy, if I remember correctly, Andrew was actually one of the individuals who brought it up, about, you know, the timing, the time, it could be a concern during the summer, and so, we are open to hearing, we need to hear from our residents, we need to see what happens within the next few months, and at a later time, or maybe when it gets closer to the time, we will actually meet again and see how we move forward with the policy. But again, this is the start, and this is what residents have been asking us to do, since everything has happened.
It's good, but my, 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 my problem with it is, because when the kids do come out of school, that there's no more school this summer, and, you know, we have basketball, we have all these other activities, and kids don't want to go home at 10 o'clock, you know? We don't want to go home at 10 o'clock, because it's a beautiful night, it's a beautiful day. So, what do we do with that? How do we tell our kids, my grandkids, you know, you need to go home at 10 o'clock?
What's your suggestion?
Well, I figured maybe 11 o'clock, you know?
We'll continue the conversation.
It's a, it's a, it's a more elaborate hour.
And this is a very good topic for us to have our resident meetings, and I just want to put this on the record. I have had the ability to attend the last two meetings, resident meetings, along with the management and the Director, and it saddens me that out of those meetings, we have about five residents that come to those meetings. And, you know, that's a sad situation, because we do, we need your input. We're not here trying to be the bad guys, we're trying to make it a better place for everyone, and a safer place for everyone. I have children that I worry about all the time, so when we do things like this, and we put policies in place, we would love to have the residents' input. We tried our best to get the residents' input, but that's not always what happens, and the residents don't give their input. We may get a handful of that, too, but we have 1,350 units to get five people? It's kind of sad, to be honest, as a resident. So, I think that, you know, the residents need to be more involved, we want to hear from you, we want to hear what it is that you guys want, how could we make it better and safer for everyone? So, I think that's probably going to be our, you know, our model from now on, just get them more involved.
And the Vice President from the Tenant Association, I will put it out there, and try to get people to come and, you know...
I think it would actually be an amazing idea for the Rap Board to attend those meetings, to have a meeting.
Yes. Well, you just let me know when it is, and I'll be there.
Thank you.
Does anyone know what's the city noise ordinance time is?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
And this is why we chose 10 o'clock.
That's when they close their parks.
Because we wanted to follow the city.
So, I mean, if the city shuts down from a noise standpoint at 10 o'clock, you know, I would assume that we would follow suit in doing the same.
No, I'm not...
Just a, if I may, just a potential out here, maybe if we incorporate a Housing Authority-sanctioned event, where that event can be triggered same day, where we know there's going to be a group of five, six, seven residents on a nice, warm evening in the summer at, you know, 11, 12 o'clock at night, if they call during the day to just say, hey, we do a little gathering tonight, at least we're aware of it, we understand it, they have the ability to stay out a little bit later on a nice evening. Again, don't know what the logistics of that looks like, don't know if that'll work, but it could be some kind of a compromise, where we have the ability to let our residents enjoy our property into the evening hours, you know, and still have the sanction on that event, so to speak. Again, like I said, I don't know if it'll work, I don't know if that's the actual answer, but throwing it out there is a potential.
All ideas.
Sorry.
Yeah, sure, sure.
I was just gonna say, my only comment on that, Commissioner, is, as long as something in the policy made it clear that it was applied evenly, that there wasn't any favoritism wasn't shown to an individual tenant, or something like that, that can certainly be discussed, and the one good thing you do have right now is the benefit of the fact that we are just about to get into the winter, and you have some time to sort that out before it's lighter out later and nicer out.
And believe me, I'm okay with being told I'm wrong, I believe, I serve on the council, so I mean...
I just, I think it's a great...
Like a Friday night, Saturday night, it could be an extended night.
I think those are all great ideas, and with what Commissioner Russo said, my only fear is that sometimes when we allow, you know, my mom has this saying, I give you a finger and you take an arm, so, and, so that opens us up to, you know, that opens us up to just going back to the same thing that we experienced this past summer, but I do understand, again, it's just a matter of getting the residents involved, listening to you guys, and our whole goal is, again, to do something that's suitable for everyone and fair to everyone, and that also makes our living space safer for us. So, I think that's just...
Thank you.
So, thank you so much, Luz. Wanda Martinez?
Okay, so if she's not here, we can move on, and then when she comes out, we can call her back. Evelyn Lopez?
E-V-E-L-Y-N-L-O-P-E-Z. Hi, I have two or three questions for the Commissioners of Hoboken Housing Authority. I want to know if a passport is sufficient, more than a motor vehicle ID? Would you accept a passport if you don't have an ID?
Okay, Evelyn, what I can tell you is that as Commissioners, and as our role as Commissioners, we don't handle the day-to-day operations of the Housing Authority, that's something that you would have to actually address with the Director, your manager, and probably Frank, those are, they're the ones that would be able to give you what is accepted and what is it, but you can read your questions into the record if that's what you would like.
Is Hoboken Housing Authority allowed to know when I leave the country and come back, and asks me the exit and the entrance of my passport? Who's gonna answer that?
And, we don't usually go back and forth, again, this is a personal issue, so we don't do it in public portion, like I said at the beginning, but if your management, if Frank, Director, if you guys can please get back with Ms. Lopez and answer her questions, it would be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
Okay.
One more question. I will have my attorney also answer that question for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
A quick question from a legal perspective, I mean, I work in HR, right, like, so there's, there are set standards for identification. Do we provide those set standards to our residents, so that they know what they potentially are if we need identification, you know, like, a social security card, a driver's license, a passport, a, you know, a county ID, not your college ID, right? Like, the things that are and aren't acceptable?
So in general, yes, is the answer to your question.
Okay, good.
There are certain documents that are normally required. My response to this is, this sounds like it's extremely fact-specific, so without knowing all of the facts, there is a provision in the ACOG where the Housing Authority can request additional information if there's some question as to some of the information that's provided.
Okay.
So there is a, within reason for the Housing Authority to request additional information, but without knowing all of the facts, I don't want to...
And I most certainly don't want to go down that road, I think that, I think the Chairwoman is correct in saying if it's a very specific individual situation, it should be handled the way she suggested. I just mean from a very generalized standpoint, we do, in fact, make sure everyone understands that your, you know, Hudson County college ID is not acceptable, versus your state-issued driver's license, or your federally issued passport.
Correct.
Okay. And I would say we do a thousand things, well over a year, every year, and we don't have this issue.
I have a question, so does the ACOG, since it was brought up, does that also, is that, is that for Housing Authority residents and voucher residents? Or is that just for, because that's just...
So, so the ACOG would apply to public housing residents, and the document that would apply to Section 8 residents, Housing Choice Program residents, would be the Administration Plan.
The Administration Plan, okay.
Yes, which has similar language in terms of verification of information provided in annual certification, but they're not the exact same document, correct? They're two different things that apply, depending upon where the assistance, which program you're referring to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Manuel Nibera Soler? Good evening, Mr. Soler. I'm sorry, this is not a busy meeting, it doesn't go well.
I appreciate that. Did he just spell that right now? Thank you, Madam Chair, for acknowledging me to be able to speak, and, as Chair...
Could you just talk up a little bit, just towards me, sorry?
I would like to thank Chairman, Councilman, Council President Russo for once again standing up for the residents' First Amendment rights, thank you, sir. That shows that what I spoke of yesterday at the council meeting stands. I would also like to now, if possible, to bring this back to issues at hand for the residents, the housing. There are some issues that I could go on for hours upon hours, and by the way, I should start by saying as well, is I claim equal time and equal indulgence as the prior speakers. There are a lot of issues that are going on that seem to not get the attention, or at least a lack of attention. There's a, at least, these were the ones that I have recently, that people speak to me about, there are holes on, pardon me, 540 Marshall Drive, these holes have been there, they've been covered, they get ground up, you know, brought up again. So that is a issue of safety for anyone who walks there, anybody who may have children or a pet that falls into that hole, that's a liability, as well as there was a water main break, it took forever for that to be fixed. I know it's not you, I'm not, I'm speaking to you, because you are the Chair, but just letting the facts be read into the record here. Amongst that, there are other issues in other places, as far as Fox Hills, cleanliness around the sidewalks, there are so many, so many issues that I, again, I could go on for days, and that's, that's, again, not trying to bring down the Housing Authority in no given shape, way, or form, it's just that things sometimes fall through the cracks as you will be perhaps making the report in a little while, in regards to the issues of prior meetings and suggestions that would perhaps be made, as well as I would also like to, now, having said that, I would like to ask you, just again, for the record, and if you could possibly tell me, or someone in the board, could tell... for the record, and if you could possibly tell me, or someone in the board could tell me, where can I find more information, like we do when we are on different boards, like the planning boards and the council, where we get more information in regards to your ordinances? If you can help me with that, it's a little difficult for me...
You mean on the resolutions?
Yes, when you talk on your resolutions, it's, I can't, maybe I'm not seeing it where I have to click on it, maybe it's there, I'm not sure, but I just wanted to ask the question. And in closing, I just want to know if tonight, when you make your resolutions, 20221206, 2221209, and, pardon me, 20221210. These are, you know, like, what it says here is a sentence, "I cannot distinguish or discern how much you're paying, what is the contract, who is it for, is it anybody that donates money to the city?" These things should be known to the public so they could at least feel confident that the job is being done correctly. I'm assuming it is, I'm not disparaging anyone again, but it's better to have it clear, let the citizens hear it and see it for themselves and read it. So, having said that, I will now take the rest of my time. I will leave it at that, and I thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen Tools? Ellen? Elba? Elba? Ellen? Elba? Is it Elba or Ellen? I think it's Elba.
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 Could you state your name and spell it for the record?
Okay, my name is Elba, E-L-B-A. My second name is Iris. I R S I.
I R S I?
I R S.
Iris. And then my last name is Gats, G-O-R-T-T-S.
Thank you, man.
Just move up to the microphone, just a little closer.
I am very shocked to have come over here, for when you get letters like this, you have to come and sue the parents. All right. They had said that I, there was 12 complaints about me. And then, I was being very good, picking up the packages, because they're stealing here. Everything is taken. And the black lady and the, and the officer said to me, I want you to play on the chair over there, and, you know, look at the packages and don't let them take them. Now, she's not my boss, my boss is the organist. This one, can I come up?
Do you need a, for us to have the letter to...
No, yeah, I'm gonna give it to you.
You can just put it on, on the table, and we'll take a look at it.
I have called senior citizens in Jersey City, they're gonna give me an appointment for discrimination, because I've been harassed, and it's right there, if I don't stop it, I'm going to lose my apartment. And I'm not gonna go for that. And another thing is that I had a problem on, because I came, I came out and she said to me, my Ruben is gonna run for mayor, I say, I'm a Republican, I don't, I changed my party that easy. That's why they have not given me my check, and I did all the election. I asked you, can you help me get one of those, you know...
Can you, I'm sorry, can you help me get what? Can you help me get...
A photo, a photo, not to travel, because I don't travel, just a photo, to hang around here, which the post office said, that doesn't have to be more than $60 or $70. And was always denied for me. The only time they've come to the house is when they wanna vote, then they go after you. But that lady, Ruben Ramos, I think it's Jesus, and she's chief of head of housing, or my, my housing, she said to me, you have to vote for Ruben. No, I don't have to vote for nobody, because I'm a Republican, a true Republican. If we lose, we lose. If you gain, we gain. And I'm not changing who I am for nobody. So, thank you, and have a nice Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alma.
Did you read this, that the person who walked in here, did you want to do that?
Um, no, I am, I'm going to. Ms. Martinez? Juana Martinez?
I think she left.
She left?
Okay.
Before we close, for Public Portion Commissioner James Stanford, I just wanted to know if you would like to address the board on anything that was said. I'd be glad to do so at this time. If you want to respond, if you would like to respond.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Everything that was said is going to be a matter of wait for us to address.
I'm sorry, you just gonna have to talk up a little bit.
I said, thank you for the opportunity to address what was spoken. The matters that were spoken about are going to be addressed by the authorities, and I have no comment at this time, other than to say that this should not have been brought at this venue.
Thank you. Okay, Director, your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. First, I'd like to thank all the residents, staff, everyone that took place in both our Halloween and especially our just recent past Thanksgiving celebrations, for the folks that brought food, the folks that cooked, the folks that made these things happen with our staff and with residents. It just wasn't, wasn't us, it was a true group effort. I can't tell you the value of these, right, residents, I mean, the value of these, of bringing us together, of celebrating, of sharing that, rather than just that usual everyday landlord/tenant. It brings us together, it does a lot, and I think it shows our appreciation, which is heartfelt from the commissioners for our residents, and we, and I give that talk everywhere, right? I'm thankful, I love that, that's my favorite, because I could talk about how thankful I am for our residents, for our staff, for our commissioners. So, thank you all for a great, great start to our holidays. We're not done yet, right? Because we've got, we've got holiday celebrations coming up over the next couple of weeks. So, again, thank you for all of that. And we are still working, believe it or not, on the Kailas Way signs. We've had a little snag on actually getting them and getting them in our pocket. As soon as they are done, and we'll keep pushing, as soon as they are done, we'll organize that, that celebration. The nighttime security policy has been discussed already this evening, so that doesn't have to be back, gone over. I don't think we will continue, except to just reemphasize that we'll be, we will be having a continued discussion with our residents on this, but we have to do something. We can't next summer go into the same type of thing we had last summer. You know, we've got to move. Our yearly request for proposals for community service providers will be out soon, it's in legal for review now. Again, once a year, we go out, we ask people to put in proposals to us to use our community rooms, to use, to use the field, so we can plan for the year. And that group is kind of in way our core group of providers, our nonprofits that come onto our properties, put on programs for our youth, for our elderly, for, for our kids and our families. So, so look forward to that over the next month. That's gonna hit the, hit the papers, and it will be widely publicized. We are beginning design on a defensible space concept that abuts the rear of the property, that abuts the light rail. After tonight, we'll have some new engineering firms, so I'm gonna work with them as soon as you guys approve them. Our managers have increased surveillance of the video systems daily. We are meeting with the HPD, that has proven positive, so things are happening there. I have increased the number of resident meetings, held a meet and greet at 411 Marshall Community Room on the 17th of November. Chairman Reyes was there, it was, I think, a small but a fruitful meeting. We will continue to show up, we will continue to be there, and that's the answer, we have to be consistent, and we are gonna be there monthly. So, that was for Harrison and Andrew Seitz, and we're at CCG on the 21st of November, and we, we will be at Fox Hill, Adams, and Monroe next week for our community meetings for December, and we'll be back in January. Our new security service has started, working on a couple gigs with them, but the old company is gone, and a new company is here. So, we're gonna work with them and get this thing rolling for everyone. A quick update on Hoboken Housing Forward, just to say again, we must remember that our redevelopment is a step-by-step process. It takes some time, but we're moving behind the scenes constantly. I have some great news, a crucial step in our redevelopment has been reached, all right, a crucial step. It's a great block for that foundation, right, Councilman?
Hit me with it.
Indeed. Thanks to Councilman and Commissioner Russo and all of the council, because I think it was unanimous, without a question, our, our sites have been designated by the city as areas in need of redevelopment, and that's, we've never got this far, we've never gotten this far, to keep pushing this. So, we're really excited about that and thankful to the city for making this happen with us. The next step is for the city to contract with the firm to perform our redevelopment plan between the housing authority and the city. They are gonna be using information on our strategic plan and growing from there, so we look forward to that. I did get the, the city's milestones on that, looks like it's gonna get published here soon, on December 16th, and with their questions, proposals due on January 12th, and tentatively they're pushing for February 1st to award a contract on that. Councilman?
Yep.
Yeah. That is, that is 100% accurate, and I told Director Brown specifically, I want the whole timeline moved up to weeks. We'll see. So, thank you for that. We'll keep pushing, and Director Brown...
He hates, he totally hates me at this point.
So, we're, we're really grateful for that, we'll keep pushing. At the October board meeting, you did approve a contract with the firm to perform an obsolescence study, they have been on site, they're doing, they've been doing their inspections, going through our units. This is a required study before we redevelop in any way, shape, or form, so it's another one of those building blocks that HUD requires an outside engineering firm to come in and say, we need to be redeveloped, not just our work, but they bring in by the numbers, by the useful life of our equipment, of our boilers, of our elevator, of everything, of, does the Hoboken Housing Authority really need to be redeveloped? The answer is yes, that's what they're gonna find, but we need to have this firm to come in and do that study officially, because it goes up the chain through DC. They've been on the ground this week, so thank you for, thank you for that, they're here, we're moving. We have requested an RFP, requesting engineering firms to provide a capital needs plan for a 10-year period. This is also something that's a HUD requirement. What this is gonna do is give us the snapshot with us and what we can publicize out to the world of as we build a new building, and then we have less old buildings, what are we gonna use our capital funding on to keep those buildings going? Because you all are gonna still be living there, and we need to make sure those buildings are still in good shape. So, this is gonna help me to project year one, year two, year three, as we build new buildings, how do we address the buildings we already have up until total redevelopment stuff? What's our plan for that? So, we need to plan that, and so they're gonna be coming in mid-January with the proposals, so we should have that contract to you in February '23. We are arranging for an initial meeting in the first quarter of 2023 with HMFA, just an initial financing. What do you guys think? How do you guys, how much do you love us? What do we need to make happen? We do expect to publish an RFP for special legal counsel in the first quarter of 2023 as well, so we don't need that yet, but we're gonna be needing that as we go into 2023. We continue to meet with enterprise partners, along with the Fitzpatrick Law Firm, our staff, and HUD, as represented by Mr. Ellis Wilson Henry. So, we're all together, we're all a team, we're all working for the best interests of the housing authority, and making sure we do this right, all right? Making sure we do this step-by-step, completely above board and transparently. That's, that's my pledge, and it's crucial. We are beginning to work on projecting our management needs as we go through 2023 and beyond. Just want to remind the residents, we are available for any forum that you might need, we are, we are available. If you want us to come to your sewing group and talk and tell everybody what we're doing, if you want us to come to the Rotary Clubs, if you want us to come to your particular club, we're glad to come and tell you what the housing authority is doing and where we are, and of course, you can always meet with me one-on-one. You gotta make an appointment, but come on in and we'll deal with our, your issues one-on-one. We are developing our resident handbook, unique to each development, and our holiday edition of our newsletter is included in your board books. We would think that the resident handbooks will probably be finalized during January and February, but we'll be sharing that with, at our, at our meet and greets, as well as our rapport and with this board, so you can take a look at them. So, the changes to our drug abuse and other criminal activity policy, I have been speaking to HUD, we have essentially, well, I've told them, if it's not back by the end of December, we're moving, because they really have 45 days, and they've been about 70 now, so I won't anger them, but we're moving forward. So, we'll get that done, that's right. We continue to follow most current CDC guidelines regarding COVID-19, we have opened our offices, we, we had a spike there for a while, but we seem to be backed down a bit, so, you know, we're pretty comfortable where we are. Fox Hill Gardens, the renovation work is in process at Fox Hill, the lighting work is complete, and we're moving on to kitchen cabinet replacements, countertops, and plumbing work, which is the next phase. We have been meeting there every other week, and Commissioner Lewitt has been with us at those meetings, and guys, I put it in writing, but I want to say publicly, thank you, Commissioner, his experience in, no, you should have a deeper sink, no, you should make this kind of lighting happen, no, you need a receptacle there, it's just invaluable as we go through these processes, so thank you, I appreciate you. The paving work at Fox Hill has been contracted, I've been waiting for the contractor to start. We are pushing him, and we hope we get it done before the snow flies, so we're pushing, no snow. Housing for Hoboken met on November 16th and December 6th, busy group this month. We have the new members, we did a lot of introductory work with them, a lot of going back over what each for each means, what our role is. They did elect new officers, and congratulations to those officers, the new president of our nonprofit is Aaron. Thank you, Aaron, congratulations. Our vice president, Barbara Reyes, the treasurer is Erica, both strings, and the secretary is April Harris. So, we're really, I think we've got a great team on that, so thanks for that. We also did check signatories, which are Aaron, Erica, and myself. Special capital projects right now, our NGH MFA project is really nearing completion with the paperwork even, our work is done, but we're nearing completion on the paperwork, we're hoping that by the end of December, and they're hoping too, that we completely close this thing out, we get the final balance of our money, everything works, we're excited. This has been, what, four years? Eight years? What a journey, so we're close, and I'm really proud of what we've done with that money. Emergency generated work, just to be repetitive, that is not gonna get until spring, it's funded, but not gonna get until spring. We are accepting now bids for four new boilers at Andrew Jackson Gardens funded through CBPG program, they will be able to be put in as soon as the boilers can be gotten. Right now, we're talking probably four to six months on a boiler order. The buildings are gonna stay warm, because we have a working good boiler in each location, but this will be the auxiliary boiler in each location. And I also want to remind folks that even though we don't have two functioning boilers in each location, each location is set up for emergency boilers should we need it. So, guys are good, not gonna get cold, we're working hard out there. Management has been focused on our three initiatives for the coming year, we're right at that 96% occupancy at our public housing and Fox Hill, I think public housing went down to 95 point something, something this month, we had some move-outs, so we're meeting, we're meeting that goal for both of our, both public housing and for Fox Hill, and that's in our develop, my vacancy report. Our next goal is achieving that 95% or better score in HUD's pick system for the year, and we've made significant progress in the reduction in tenants' accounts receivables. I would really like to thank the many families that have coordinated with management. I would really like to thank the many families that have coordinated with management, that have come in to pay their full balance or to plan for a repayment agreement. I can't thank the residents enough. So many people have been real positive going, we get it, we owe the RAB, now we're going to work out something with you. And we're open, and we're plugging them into any type of assistance they could find out that. But yet, we still have a number of residents, families that have not responded to us. And I want to be clear, we need to come in. If you know folks that haven't responded to us, have them come and see your manager. We want to work this out before we need to take any legal action, right?
Is management contacting those families?
Yes. We've sent letters, I think a couple, a lot of rounds of letters now.
So far, there's two letters, the final letters going out, and that will be a certified letter.
How about contacting them on the phone and actually speaking to an individual? Is that happening?
The managers aren't reaching out. I don't know specifically, but everybody's being contacted.
And I think a phone bank wouldn't hurt, but we, they and the people know.
Yeah. I was just going to ask, are there, is there a group that we haven't had any contact with that we're kind of concentrating on?
No.
Are they all?
Yeah. Frank, you want to talk to us a little bit about this?
That's not how that works.
I got this.
I'm trying to.
You don't give one of them.
I'm trying to be.
It's been a long night.
Long day.
Sure.
One more time.
Frank, commercial?
Hi.
I don't joke, but you like, I don't even like you.
Okay, so two months ago, when we brought this topic up for the first time and those first numbers came out, it was overwhelming for everybody. I think it was a shock, understanding the magnitude of the money that was outstanding, the amount of families that were outstanding. We put a plan in place that started October 1st, which was we were going to send letters out, a certain amount of rounds of letters. We were going to offer repayments. In the first two months, we have, as you can see, so if we can take a look at Andrew Jackson North, for example, we started out with $559,000, and $344,000 worth of repayments have come in. 60% of that debt is now on repayments.
Under repayment agreements.
Repayment agreements. So that's incredible. I think that there's.
Agreements only?
Agreements. Also, some people paid, but meaning that the families came in, we have a contract in hand, they're paying a monthly amount that's comfortable for them to be able to make it. So 60% of the, just Andrew Jackson, I'm only using that as an example, so that you can see what a difference just when we put our attention to something, we can make, right? So I know that for anything that we ever do, there's always the people that come out first, and then unfortunately, people that come in the end, right? However, I was pleasantly surprised in the middle month that we still had enough people that come in. So people are coming in, and we are, and like I keep saying every month, our goal is to have 100% of the people in repayments, because then we're good. That means that every family will be safe, and that means that we will get the money that's owed to the housing authority so we can operate. These numbers are going to keep growing. Andrew, you had asked for a report, so I'll make this as a monthly report. And then you'll, every month you'll be able to see. So the first, the first thing is our rent rolls, how much we collect. So we collect, our rent rolls every month is 447,000. Our outstanding rent started out with a million and three. We entered into 527, $527,000 worth of repayments. So our new outstanding balance is 795,000. In our final effort, I'm hoping that if we have a month as good as we had just this month, if we can get, so we're at 40% now. Our initial lofty dream was if we can get half of the families in, right? We're almost there, so I think we're going to surpass that goal. What I'd like to see, if we could at least realistically, I know we're never going to get 100%, but can we get 75% of the families? Can we get 80% of the families to come in? So I really want to thank the managers because this is something that's happening above and beyond everything else that we're doing right now, right? So obviously, everything that keeps coming our way, the vacancies aren't stopping. We're still filling vacancies, right? We have buildings that are almost at 100%. We were talking 88% just a couple years ago. So everything, if we keep just moving in the same direction, so the very next step is, a letter is going to go out in the month of December, that's the final notice.
Excuse me, can I? Please. A letter's going to go out.
In December, that's the final notice, and that's going to be okay. This is your final opportunity. You must enter into a repayment by such, such date. At that point, all the families that are not in a repayment will get their eviction letters, and we will then have court dates that we're going to have to start the process of, however long that takes. That may be another seven, eight months, nine months. That depending on what that is. Hopefully, like I said, we can get as many people. This is for everybody here. This is for all our managers. This is for all of you guys as commissioners. The more families we can entice to just come in and talk to us, we're making it as easy as possible. Just start and repeat is all I ask.
Can?
Yes.
I don't know if it's possible to add a column of the real-time number that's actually, we're actually collecting.
Yes, that's at the bottom. So 12,000, 12,039, for example, that's going to be the monthly repayments for that 344.
Okay, that's.
On top of the rental.
On top of the rental.
Correct.
So I believe that by the time we wrap up all the repayments, we should have about maybe $70,000 of income monthly.
Monthly.
That will be that long-term, you know?
So according to this, 60% of outstanding rents, we have not had any contact with because there's no one, they're not on the payment plan.
Right. So far, 40%, of the outstanding families entered into repayments, and 60%.
Almost a half a million dollars are, we can assume, are not going to be collected.
Maybe, maybe a little bit, but yes, that's, that's.
So what is the plan with that? How do we, how do we write down a half a million dollars of money that?
That will be more.
So the first, one step would be to file an eviction action for non-payment rent, and that is what Frank's referring to, which will come essentially sometime at the beginning of the year. Complaints would, if necessary, be filed to Superior Court for eviction. Now, that is not for the money itself, but the way it works practically, that often leads to a court sanctioned agreement for repayment. It's not the same as our in-house agreement, it's more enforceable. And the goal there is to get anyone who the housing authority brings to court for non-payment entering one of those and keep them in the unit and collect the money. If need be, and that doesn't happen, the housing authority could file or could pursue the actual eviction based on non-payment of rent, and then the housing authority would be free. It is anyway. The housing authority would be free in a lot of cases to file a collection action, which is largely dependent upon the amount. For example, there will probably be a decent amount, and the housing authority will have to prioritize, which is to file when, it probably started with the higher balances. And the housing authority's ability to collect frankly depends upon the source and amount of the income. If it's lower income, minimum rent, then chances that the housing authority will ever collect on that, not great.
Right. So of the 60%, what percent have we talked to?
Well, we've communicated with all the families because.
When you say communicated, that's, that's just a letter, though. We don't know if they read it, or got it, or ignored it. So is there a way we can get a little more aggressive with knocking, I mean, can we knock on the door? Is it legal to knock on the door and say, hey, what's your plan for repaying the rent?
Well, that's what I'm seeing right now, the management staff, the final push now is knocking on doors and making phone calls on those last ones.
So one, yeah, that's the first step, we have to get more aggressive with contact.
And the last, the last letter, I'm hoping to make it certified so that there isn't, I didn't get that letter. I want to have that proof that you've got a certified letter and you didn't pick it up, or you, you know?
This leads to the next part, number two, is kind of, is there a way we can, you know, they might be scared, right? They might be like, damn, I don't have the money, I spent the money. I gotta, I gotta ignore them. Is there a way we could potentially come up with a deal or say to them, listen, if you at least acknowledge and get on a payment plan, let's knock off 15% or let's do something creative to ease their worry that they don't have to pay the whole thing?
The problem is, we cannot forgive debt that's not ours to forgive. So that is not our money to forgive. It's the federal, the federal government's money, and then they're the only ones that can forgive it. So they're not giving us the ability to pass that along.
So now, if the housing authority were to get into a specific discussion with a specific tenant, and the tenant were to question a certain charge or an amount, things like that, that's something the housing authority would have some discretion over in terms of simply forgiving something that both sides are agreed our own, HUD won't allow.
I just, yeah, it goes back to my original thought that like, during this entire period, I don't think, and I know it's not just us, it's everybody, it's country. We didn't do a good job of educating people that you didn't have to pay the money back. Everyone saw it on TV, read it in the papers, forgiveness, 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 and no one realized, shit, I gotta, I might, I have to pay the rent now, but there's going to be a day where I have to pay this thing. And they just spent the money that they were getting free checks in the mail, and they were spending it on TVs and intangible goods, right? And now the day reckoning is coming, I just, it sucks because there wasn't, we admitted that we didn't contact any of these people during this entire.
Well, no, we sent, every month we sent your outstanding rent letters.
No, that's not true. I'm sorry, Frank, I'm going to say this again. We do not receive an outstanding balance every month as a resident. When you pay your rent, you're given a receipt.
A receipt that has a balance. You do receive.
Yeah, but you have to go pay your rent. We don't get it in the mail.
You guys admitted to that, and it's not your fault. It's every housing authority is going through the same thing. You know, you see it in the papers all the time, but we unfortunately didn't let these people know and educate them that you could have to pay this back. So it's just, you know.
Quick comment. Into the future, to try to solve for that exact issue, can we issue a rent statement to every? So in the building that I live, right, every month, on the first of the month, there is literally an envelope on my door, which is my rent bill and receipt. So can we somehow do something like that where, whether it comes in the mail, whether it's done by the managers, they walk through the building and put everybody's.
Our new outstanding delinquency notices are now standardized, so every month, all the people who are delinquent will get a delinquent letter.
Is that new, though, Frank?
That's, I found out here with you that you're telling me that, from my point of view, I thought letters were going out every month to every tenant.
That's not true.
But are they now?
Never.
So, but what I'm saying, part of this process?
Right now.
Letters go out for anybody that's delinquent, every month, moving forward.
Great, that's what I wanted to do.
So we don't have to fix that, it's not something we can fix.
Beautiful. That's the point I was trying to make.
Okay.
So what should be happening, and I believe this started in October?
October.
Every month, anybody who does not pay by the fifth business day of that month should be receiving what's commonly referred to as a 30-day notice, which the notice itself is termed a notice to quit and demand for possession, essentially saying, you didn't pay your rent, you have to pay your rent, or we could pursue eviction action. And that doesn't state the specific monthly charges, but it should show, it does show a total amount of rent, to the point where if there was a question, the resident would be free to go to the manager and say, I don't agree with this, what's this amount?
Okay. So follow-up questions here, because let's talk about the reality of what happens. We, all of us, get the phone call from the resident to say, hey, I got that notice and says I owe $12,000, right? So we as commissioners, and we don't have to do it now, we are, of course, but I think it would be wise for maybe you to send out a memo, director from you or from you, Matt, for a process for us in how we handle that, right? Because now, I get it twice, right? I got it as a commissioner, and I get it as a councilman as well. So that would be extremely helpful to me to say, okay, no problem, don't panic. This is what you need to do, whether that's getting to Frank, get your agreement put in place, going on, you know, an electronic fund transfer for your rent, whatever those processes are, we should kind of have that in a bullet point memo so that we know what to say when we get the phone call, because we're going to get the phone call, right? So, and that also helps us to kind of achieve the overall goal of getting this number as high as potentially possible, you know? Hopefully, we could get it to 100%, but unlikely. And then just the final question and potentially comment here is, you know, we talked about a lot of the programs with Barbara's help. We had, you know, residents go and try. Yeah, and they could apply for these different programs, whether they qualify or not is determined by those individual programs, but is there a program where we, as a housing authority, could apply for the outstanding money? Where we're going and saying, hey, we have all these residents that are behind on their rent, and this is going to become bad debt for us. Can we apply to your organization for grant money for whatever it may be, so that it's directly paid to the housing authority rather than through the individual tenant?
That's a grant, right?
Yeah. And I know there are organizations out there that do things like that with, like PSCNG or water utilities or sewage authorities. They may, this authority may qualify for stuff like that. I think it's something that we should look into because the goal here is to get to 100%.
That's right.
Right? We're trying to raise all the money we can out of what's outstanding. We don't want to evict anyone.
Right.
We don't want to.
You have to look at these agencies that provide that service. So you have to look at the agencies that receive the money, whether it's from the federal government or the state to, for rental assistance specifically, and then see if they are allowed to have a sub-grantee that they can provide that money to. Obviously, we would have to provide them reports and so forth on a monthly basis, but that's usually how it works. So the main agency gets the grant, and if it's written in their grant that they are allowed to subcontract other agencies, that could be a way in for us to be a subcontractor, and they would actually hit, you know?
And that could go to Commissioner Apostado's point of saying to the tenant, hey, we're going to forgive, meanwhile, we're not really forgiving anything, right? We just know we got it from a grant, and we applied that across the board, but now to that individual, that's less money that they have to come up with in a repayment kind of plan.
And you hit on the, my only comment that I was going to have on that suggestion is to have to be very careful about how that money is allocated.
Allocated, without doubt.
Make sure that it's done fairly evenly.
Usually with those grants, there are documents that are mandated. There is a lot, a lot of backup. I mean, these managers here can tell you, we've been helping working with the county and the amount of documentation that they require, and not only that you submit, but then they come back and say, no, this is not good enough, we want this also. So it is, it takes a lot of work. It's a lot of work, and it's a lot of paperwork, but at the end of it, I guess, you know, it works because it helps our residents.
And one thing I will point out, and I'm sure Madam Chair knows more about this than I ever will. In my experience, if you do have somebody like the county or somebody else who is receiving these funds, they're going to want to have a very strong say over where that goes.
Yes.
So it's certainly worth pursuing whether or not this is possible. I have my doubts over whether we'd be successful, but that doesn't mean you don't.
So question. So the folks who are outstanding, are they paying their rent currently, or they're still not paying rent?
No. So they're not paying their rent or are in a repayment.
Wow.
So it's a double win.
On, under, under AG, in column AG, it says zero.
Right. The senior buildings right now don't have any repayments. We did the effort with hopes, and we're getting some checks in, so hopefully we enter into some repayments, because there are no repayments as of right now.
And this row is number of households with a balance, right? This at the bottom here?
So I wasn't involved in preparing this spreadsheet, but just to provide a little clarity, I think all Frank is trying to say is, there was an effort with hopes and with the county to try and focus on the senior buildings to get people direct assistance from the county through the senior buildings. So I think what Frank is trying to say, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the repayment agreement process hasn't exactly started in earnest there yet because people are still waiting to see exactly where they stand.
And I will have the senior buildings in next.
I know, but I'm just. No, I know, but I'm just, it says $28,000 of outstanding rent, but then at the bottom where it says.
It doesn't have a number of people.
It says number of households with a balance is zero.
Right. I left that out right now. We have the outstanding, some checks are coming in. So I didn't have that information on my fingertips. So I didn't want to give you a number that wasn't, that wasn't full.
What was happening Andrew is that when the county came down and they actually obtained the documents themselves, it's such an easier, an easier process for them to process than when we process it because then they have to come through us, we have to go back to the client and back and forth. So when it's directly through them, it made it a lot easier and a lot quicker for them to get there.
But still, it doesn't answer to your point, why no repayments happen? They got the same letters that the public housing, right? And why did some amps get more than others? It's the families that came in. I'm not gonna say specifically this is something to do directly with the managers. This is more the families that received letters than responded to the call. I think that what this next month has to bring is what we're all talking about, which is outreach and education to make sure that we get those families in. We'll have the numbers back from the effort that happened from the county.
Yeah, if you can include also specifically for each one, did you contact them? Did you knock on their door? Because we have to get aggressive with that. And then also if you can include, add a percentage, the 60% of people that haven't repaid, how many units that is and what the dollar amount for each unit is. So like, is it $12,000 for one unit? Is it 100 units of less than 100? I like to see that included, like a column.
But that should be a rolling number because we're not collecting rent anyway. So that number is not gonna be a stacked number, it's a rolling number. That number's gonna continuously change because we're not collecting rent.
But I do wanna, and I thank you for bringing it up. The first sign of hope that we got was these repayment agreements that we entered into. Right now, the number is so high because it was mostly the people who had the bigger balances, which also means they're the people with the higher rent. So when those families went into a repayment, it stopped the bleeding that happens from the month-to-month toll number that kept growing. So that number was growing. So 2021, it was 700,000. At the end of '22, we're at a million four. For the first month in October, that number stopped. Stopped growing at the rate that it did. In the month of November, it almost became nothing, which means those families that entered into repayments are making a repayment payment plus they're paying the rent. Because we can't accept your repayment rent unless you're paying rent. So that is, there's a lot of hidden goodies that come out of that. But I will, I will keep expanding on this.
My last question is financially, where does this leave us in our hardship category and status? You know, how, if we're half a million dollars loss of rent, you know, where does that put us on the balance sheet?
First of all, it puts us on the same spot that so many housing authorities are across the country. It's hard. I mean, we're always balancing that budget between the level of funding we're getting and the amount of money we're coming in. We're always making that decision, can we hire more maintenance guys? Nope, we gotta hold off until this money starts flowing in. We're always dealing with that issue.
The only problem is we're like the bad boy, alright? We're like the person that like overspent the credit card. So we're not in the same boat as all these other housing authorities. We're in financial hardship. So we have to get really aggressive with these people. And we have to wait outside their house and like, we gotta knock the doors. And then understand, there has to be a plan financially where if that money doesn't come in, you know, what are we doing? Are we slashing jobs? Are we, you know, what are we doing to make up that money?
Well, we're past that trough now. Hopefully we're turning that corner now, right? Because we spent the last couple of years. And I understand some people have said, you need to hire more maintenance guys. You need to do that and we've had to say, yes, I'd love to hire five more maintenance guys, but I just don't have the funds to do it. So we're hoping as this, we go into 2023 and we start to see this income, we start to say, okay, we can hire an extra guy to clean buildings. We can hire an extra contractor to come in, maybe contract to do those floors. So we're looking at it monthly on what we can afford to do. Now, we gotta understand too that our basic reserves have been low for 10 years. So we need to build up those reserves. So I'm always looking at it, how much can we add at the end of the year back to reserves? And how much can we spend for more staff? How much can we spend for more things that we do day to day?
What subcommittee helps you with that?
Finance.
Finance, okay. So maybe at the next finance subcommittee, we can kind of dive into that.
Sure can.
And help you, you know, just stay on track because it's a daunting task.
Yeah, because the, you know, our fiscal year ends in September, then September. So now those final numbers for last year are gonna be coming in. Because it takes them two to three months to make that happen, go through that cycle. So we can do that in the finance, probably in January.
I have a question because there's a resident that's dealing with this situation. So the individual is a homemaker and I don't know if many people know, when you're a homemaker, your hours vary. So one week you can have a full-time position, which is 40 hours, and the next week, one of your patients is in the hospital and you're not working and you're only working 20 hours a week. And so during the whole COVID situation, they submitted the information with their lease of what they were making at that time. So they submitted their pay stubs, they submitted their lease, they were given the amount that they have to pay and that's what they paid. So what happens now? In the meantime, they go back to getting again 40 hours one week, 20 hours another week and so forth. How does it work for these residents? Because honestly, does this resident go every week and say, well, this week I'm making 40 hours? This week I'm making 20 hours? This week, like how does that work? It's not fair to the resident and I don't understand how management would be able to handle that. So how does that work?
So we have a few different types of work, types of jobs that create that scenario. It is on the families though, to come to us with their changes. So if it's that big of a fluctuation, you should be speaking with the manager. We can make a change monthly, we really can. There isn't that many people that are gonna be in that situation. As long as we communicate with them, we can change it.
And that's great, but what happens when this person incurred that during COVID and no one was getting back to anybody?
I mean, we've.
But this happened. It happened. And it was happening and we can't ignore, because I'm a resident here and I've been a resident for many years, before even I sat on this board, during COVID, we were not getting responses back from all management. And I'm not saying, you know, I'm not picking on a specific manager. I'm just saying that yeah, there may be a manager that was, you know, answering residents' back, but maybe my manager was, but her manager wasn't or his manager wasn't. And that was a problem. And now the resident's sitting back saying, how do I owe $12,000 rent? If I was submitting what I could, because during COVID, you guys did accept it via email. And so if they did submit it and it wasn't entered into the system, how does that now become part of the resident's form?
Well, I think, yeah, I think they could argue with that, but the basic premise is you need to pay 30% of your income for rent and utilities. And it's our job, when it's reported to us, to track that for sure. But if you didn't report it as a resident, you know, if your income doubled and you didn't send your manager an email saying, hey, my income just doubled, so my rent has to go up. You know, that's a responsibility of the resident as well. You know, and to know that your income went up, so you need to put, you may have needed to put that money aside. But federal law says you need to pay 30% of your income for renting utilities.
So I want to give you an example.
That's federal.
Yes. A tenant comes in with all their paperwork and they give it to a manager. No matter who it is, manager, we're all human, we can make a mistake. Let's say it did not get done or it got done wrong. A year goes by. At the end of the day, no matter whether it was the tenant who didn't report it or the manager who made a mistake, what he said is what counts at the end, the end of the day. It's 30%, so we can fix everything with your taxes. 95% of the people that come to me with an issue, it's not what you're saying, it's the other way around. They have $30,000 more than what they reported. It's not that they didn't tell us.
So what you're saying is it could be rectified year over year with a tax return?
Correct. So that's what I was getting at. For people who have fluctuating incomes, we could, to be, like for example, Uber is a big thing right now. All these like services that change, that fluctuate. So one thing that we can do is we could always take your last year and you would always be one year behind and it would always be fair. You pay what you made last year, the next year you paid what you made this year and the following year like that. To make it 100%, we don't have to guess. So we can get close enough and then if it's a big disparity with somebody, we can do that. We can say to somebody, we will go year over year for you because we've seen the fluctuation for you, so you only pay what you want. Another example are some crossing guards or people that work for the school. They only work 10 months. So those families have different choices. That could be whether we split what you make over 12 months and then you pay an even amount or you pay higher when you're in school and you pay nothing in the summer. So there is flexibility in how we calculate that. But at the end of the day, bottom line is this. When we get to the end of the year, whatever's on your taxes, that's why when we enter into repayments or we're talking about anything that has to be a discrepancy of income, before we talk, let's just look at your taxes. If your taxes, whatever your taxes show is what we should have used. And if it was more or less.
We'll adjust.
But you have that in the information that you're getting through your.
No, we get pay stubs. We don't necessarily get taxes.
You're EIB, your income verification.
Oh, no, we see it. Yeah, we see it. I'm saying when someone comes to us.
You guys know, you guys talk at the same time.
And one thing, and I think, I think I understand where you're getting at, Madam Chair. If there are people who were submitting their documentation, say by email, through COVID and they didn't get a rent adjustment, they didn't get a response, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I would think that's something if they have proof of that, I mean, if they have copies of the email, which I know you don't necessarily always have.
Yo, you do.
But, I mean, in a lot of cases you would. If you have those, that's certainly something that they should bring in when it comes time to discuss a repayment agreement. I would think that that's something that the authority would consider in terms of whether a rent adjustment is warranted, right? Now, if they can say, hey, I told you this every month for six months and nothing was done, then I would think that would be something the housing authority would revisit and would try and work with the resident.
Thank you.
So that is not, and I understand why somebody would get sticker shock, see, I owe $12,000 and not want to come in, not want to do anything about it. But, and the most important thing here, and this goes back to a question Commissioner Costado asked, word of mouth, is people who have entered repayment agreements and who have worked with the authority telling people. And I understand that could be a slow process. But the idea to tell people, hey, if that's the case, don't think that doesn't mean you're on, that means you're on the hook for $12,000. If you have proof that you told the housing authority and nothing was done, bring it in. Go meet with them. Worst that can happen is you walk out of there without a payment.
Well, I think the resident to apply for the assistance, see how much they can get and then obviously go to the management and see what they can do as far as a, as far as a payment, repayment plan. So, I mean, that's what I tell them. But again, like this is things that are happening. These are residents that live in our buildings that do go through this, that don't have, you know, the steady income, the 40 hours a week or. So I think we also have to think.
And part of that is, I think, getting the word out there that that's something the housing authority is willing to sit down and talk to you about. And I understand that there might be some distrust on the other end from years of experience. But the alternative to that is.
For our resident meetings.
I mean, the alternative to that is a complaint is gonna be filed and nobody wants that to be pursued to its conclusion. So just to get the word out there, hey, if that's the case, get all your facts together and sit down and talk about it and let's see what we can figure out.
We want to get that word out in any way we can, that we're here to talk. To that point, I was gonna ask a question. I mean, like for me, specific to CCG, right? I'm also the councilman that represents those buildings. So in a situation where if I'm doing something in that capacity as a councilman, I'm holding an event there or whatever it may be, right? Is it okay for me as a commissioner to say to residents, hey, by the way, you know, as a housing authority, we're trying to provide this assistance through repayment program for back rent? Can I kind of tell them and kind of guide them? Because I don't want to find myself in a situation where I'm doing that, but I shouldn't be, right? Because again, I gotta wear two hats, so I always want to know where I really should be. Again, if you don't have the answer now, you could always let me know.
Right, and that's an authority issue in terms of, am I giving you the answer in your capacity as a housing authority commissioner? Am I giving you the capacity as the city council president?
Yeah, I want it from the perspective of the housing authority commissioner. Am I overstepping as a commissioner to kind of almost do administrative work in this sense, right? In my opinion, I'm just informing someone of something, right? So I just want to make sure of that if I am telling somebody something.
And that may be where your question about a memo with some guidance would come in. Now, if that is done, and I'd be happy to do that.
Please.
But if that is done and you're essentially referring to that and giving people that guidance, I mean, from a housing authority standpoint, I'm not getting into your roles.
No, no, I get it.
I would think that's totally appropriate. If you're toeing the company line essentially and giving everybody the same answer that any other commissioner could give, I think that's totally.
And as the executive director, I'd like to reinforce that. But I'd also like to add one more thing. Call us and make an appointment. I, we meet with seven to eight residents a week easily. Sometimes 10 to 12 residents a week. And we work out those issues. Come on in. We'll work out that issue with you. If you're not happy, sit down with your manager, sit down with manager Frank. If that doesn't work, sit down with me. And I think commissioners need to say that. If you have an issue, here's your cell phone number. Go ahead. Better yet, stop by the office and fill out one of those little forms. We'll make an appointment with you. We'll sit down with anyone that has an issue or has a problem. And assure them, you know, I think your job's, so many things as a board is to funnel folks back to us. Because we're the ones that have to sit with them and make it happen. And again, whether it be a program somebody wants to put on or whether it's a rent issue, go back to the staff. Because many people will go to you and they haven't come to see us yet.
Okay. And one last thing that I'll add, I don't want to belabor the point, I know it's getting late, but that since we've been representing the authority, the authority's position is no in-house repayment agreements. Any agreement you sign has to be as a result of a complaint filed and a court action. Obviously, the housing authority understands the circumstances and that's not what's happening here. So it sounds like a minor point, but to me, that's a little bit of evidence of the housing authority is willing to work with you here. I mean, we don't want to go to court. We don't want to have to file a complaint. We don't want to pay for the complaint. We don't want to pay the lawyer to have to go to court for the complaint.
Does this include late fees?
No, that's.
So are those people also paying late fees?
If they're seniors, they wouldn't, but if they're non-seniors, they are accumulating late fees.
We did waive late fees over the pandemic period. So those wouldn't have been like back charges forever.
Right. It's just now going forward.
And your authority did waive, and this, I'm okay with this, I'm not droning, did waive late fees longer than was legally required as a courtesy to people who were in tough times.
I did just call you, the biggest selling point is the 0%, interest loan is what this is. 0%.
During COVID, I think we were really trying to be sensitive to the residents. And I know the board did say, I know I said once, I may not have said a hundred times, but we did say it would have to be paid back. What they wanted to be, to try to take away the late fees, to try to tell people about the programs, try to tell people about the funding because we were in such a crisis, we did not want people to think they were gonna be evicted during that time or ever, especially during that time.
I also want to say that unfortunately, what happened in the housing authority was individuals were going around saying that you don't have to pay rent, that it will be forgiven, and that was absolutely false. And unfortunately, that came from advocates, you know, out in the community that were doing that and put us in a situation where it was false. And I'm saying it as a resident because I've heard it as a resident, not as a board commissioner. So the false information that was given out to the residents of the housing authority or provided to, because we all know the best way to get the word out is by word of mouth, right? So she said, you said, I said, right? So that's what happened. They went out there and they said, you don't have to pay rent. That spread through the entire housing authority. And where we messed up is that we didn't correct that.
Yep, correct.
That was our error and I think we need to take responsibility for that.
Yeah, we had at the shelter, we had a lot of folks show up on our doorstep for the same reason, looking for rental assistance. And we're like, you know, that's not what we do. Well, they told me that I didn't have to pay my rent. So I found that to be very strange that a whole slew of folks, not one or two, I'm talking in droves, were coming in weekly with eviction notices. Like, hey, I don't know why I'm being evicted for, I didn't pay rent for two years. know why I'm being evicted, but we didn't pay rent for two years." So...
No, for sure. I'm not saying we didn't drop the ball. I'm saying during that time, we were trying to be super sensitive. This is going 2020. Not saying we didn't drop the ball, just trying to say we were trying to be sensitive at that time.
Are we back to my report?
Oh, I thought you were done.
Maintenance report, just a couple, I'll be quick here, I'm getting right at the end. The maintenance report, I did put our attachment on major maintenance plumbing projects, and if you'll see that, at the very bottom, it does mention that there was a major waterline break that was brought up earlier. That waterline break was fixed within 48 hours. No one went without water, and it was fixed in 48 hours. And to say that it took forever, I must say, is absolutely false. Because, and you know, the city does not fix that. We fix that. That is our job to do. We bring in a private contractor, within 40 hours, we had a backhoe out there, and we were doing that. So, and we had to meet with the Office of Emergency Management. So again, some things you hear out there, it was not done forever, just, excuse me. So, because our maintenance guys work hard, and we are responsive. When we are called, our maintenance folks respond. We're not perfect, but I'll tell you, you go in the private sector and try to get somebody out there at 1:00 in the morning, I mean, we're out there. We're out there working all the time, so I have the greatest respect for our maintenance department. Do, are we perfect? Can we do everything? No, but I think they do a great job. Our unit special projects are also one of your attachments. Did, I think, seven or eight this past month. We are close to the completion on the carbon monoxide detectors and all the units. We are still working on getting that panic bar release over at Mama Johnson Field, but we're almost there. We've been working hard on our snow removal equipment and our boiler systems, and we will be rebuilding our laundry facilities in very short order. We are working on finance, on closing out our HMFA, as I mentioned before. That's that $13 million loan grant that's being forgiven. That's a lot of work on finance. They've been really keeping their nose to the grindstone on that. And housing authority voucher budgets for project-based vouchers and contract management. And Daniel, if you want to say a thing or two about Resident Services that I can really about, Robert Daniels, hi.
He's here.
The abbreviated version, my brother.
Yes, yes, definitely.
I love you.
Oh, boy.
This is a snapshot, just like every month. So as you know, end of the year, we look back, thank you all of all, the organizations that work with us to provide services and important resources for our community. So just briefly, wanted to recognize Hopes, Amazing True Society Community Lifestyles, Woken Public Life, and many others that support us throughout the years. So thank God for those organizations that help Resident Services provide to our community. Now, moving forward, we are in the holidays, right? So we're in the holiday spirit, we're going to be celebrating. So Saturday, we're going to be at a Winter Wonderland event at the Annette Braxton Community Courtyard. So please join us, that starts at 4:00 p.m. It's going to be an amazing event. A lot of organizations are going to be joining us, and we're going to have toy giveaway for all of our families. And then, we hit our senior buildings with our amazing family luncheon. So 14th, we're going to be at Monroe, 15th, we're going to be at Foxville, 16th, we're going to be at 220 Adams, right here, and on the 17th, we're going to be at Christopher Columbus. So, thank you so much, and that's my report.
I just want to add to Danny's snapshot, and Danny, I have to email you on this, but on the 21st, Hopes is having our Senior Game Day. It's going to be from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. This time, we are doing it at our location, at 301 Garden Street. We would do our best to get transportation for the seniors that want to go there. So that's going to be during the day for seniors from 1:00 to 4:00. We know they enjoy it. Last time, we did nails, we did hair, they had an amazing time. And then, in the evening, from 6:00 to 8:00, we're going to have the Children's Game Night, which will be open to the entire community, including the housing authority. And again, that's from 6:00 to 8:00, and everyone is invited to that as well.
Please send me that.
One other thing you didn't, and this might be my fault, because I don't know where I am all the time, but you didn't get back to me with the size of that.
Oh, with the size, 65?
Let's see what we can do.
That's a request from Mr. Davis.
Did we ask the City of Hoboken if we could do the Winter Wonderland in the gym?
Oh, no.
It's not supposed to rain. May I?
And the idea behind this was to have an outside event.
Wait, may I? Okay, so, so Winter Wonderland was a combination of taking direction from the members of the housing authority, who we work closely with, which is the McDonald family. If you remember during 2020, I handed out, Barb is on me, I handed out candy cane to everybody in the community. They missed the idea of community, of being in the courtyard, and they see the housing. We wanted to do something for housing residents and invite the community. So we, so last year, everybody brainstormed. Familyhood became a, I did not choose the name of Familyhood. The Familyhood organizers chose Familyhood. As somebody, as the Chair of the Resident Services Committee, and somebody who plans events all over Hoboken, they asked for me to join them. It's not a one or the other, it's a 50/50, 100% the same team. So it is their name, it is our event together, planned together. It's a way to bring the entire community. We have, we asked, we sent emails and letters to everybody. All of the religious organizations got emails, all of our community partners got emails. It is very, very hard to pick a date. It is very, very hard to find a date to accommodate everybody. We tried one day, one last year, we're trying Saturday this year. We have a lot of people coming, we have the public schools coming, we have members of the community. More important, we have residents coming to say.
Participating.
Participating. We have other groups outside coming to bring hot chocolate, and I apologize, I would love to sit down, maybe Mr. Russo, Commissioner Russo can explain to Mrs. Waiters the situation, what we're trying to do, how it's not, it's really supposed to be for everybody to come and enjoy with us.
Yeah, no, I get all, I understand all that, I just, I saw when he was there last year handing out stuff, it was freezing, and like, the poor kids were like shivering. So, I just think, I know you want to get someone on the property, but that gym is right there at 7th and Jackson. Like, they just had a boxing match in there. Let's ask them if we can get in there, and like, the kids now are warm and like, walking around, and it's an indoor Winter Wonderland. I think not a 25-degree shivering moment. I don't know if that's, I think that's pretty rational.
So if I, if I could add a couple of things, one, I don't totally disagree with you. I think having the option of both indoor and outdoor, and that gym is actually really cool, because that gym actually opens to the outdoors, right? So, we may be able to, we may be able to do something where we're on our own property and a city property.
It's very cool.
To that point, last night at our council meeting, we approved a first reading of our ordinances to kind of mandate how the city allocates public spaces, whether that's gym spaces, field spaces, park spaces, things like that. I advocated in our, in our committee meetings to make sure that the housing authority was not only recognized specifically, but that we were the second in line, only second to the City of Hoboken. So that we have preference over anyone else, including the school system, for use of city properties and parks. So, meaning that when we want to do things like that, if the city is not having an event there, we're up. Right, we're, we're on deck. So we have that ability, God willing, that will pass on second reading, I don't see any, any reason it wouldn't, but that puts us in, in second in line for any, any of the properties for use of those properties. On that note, Director, while, while we're talking about it, I've talked to you a little bit about this privately, about the use of Mama Johnson Field. I think we, as an authority, should also follow suit and kind of create the same type of a policy where anything after housing authority use, there's a hierarchy. So we know that if it's the school system and the City of Hoboken versus a nonprofit organization that would like to use our facilities versus a for-profit organization, right? So the city, and I can most certainly get you the draft of the ordinance from the city, so we can look at that. But I continue to get requests about Mama Johnson Field specifically, because at least what's been reported to me, and I haven't seen this yet in the agreement, but what's been reported to me is that there's a violation to having that locked because of our agreement with the city. And I don't know that to be true, but I want to make sure that you look into it. Because if residents, yeah, because if residents are under the impression that when the city or the housing authority is not using Mama Johnson Field, it's supposed to be open to the public, there's a problem there. Because, you know, we want to make sure that we're, we're number one in compliance, and number two, we're not misinforming the public. So if we could get an answer to that, I would greatly appreciate it, and then set that policy so that we know when somebody wants to use our facilities, we have this hierarchy. And then we can even talk about, you know, any for-profit organization, what fees are, things like that, because we do have some of that already on the book, so.
And I will point out that the housing authority does that to a certain extent in its Resident Services RFP, which is about to go out. City, under the agreement, has first shot. Housing Authority then provides, I believe, for housing authority community partners, depending on the agreement, and then to other nonprofits. And I believe this past year, we did not do the RFP for the for-profit partners.
That's right.
It was a decision made, policy decision. So, that could always be revisited.
And I'm not saying we need to do any of it or all of it, I'm just saying, I think we should fix up that policy.
Yeah, I think the thought was that there was enough demand for the field from people who weren't for-profit, that it just wasn't available, which is fine. So there is a little bit of that, but it wouldn't be the worst idea to take a look at the ordinance and see if maybe there's something in there that the housing authority didn't think of, something we could be doing better, something we may want to say to the city, well, our experience, this is how it works, that would be great.
And I think to take a look at that agreement, because the problem we've had is, is when it's open, it gets vandalized. If there's no one there, we've tried a couple times to have folks to say, "Let's have monitors on the field. Who wants to volunteer, resident organizations to volunteer to monitor," and it's never panned out. Now, if we just opened the gates, you're going to have some issues there, but that's a good conversation to have, because we want it open. We want folks to use it. We want kids to go in there and have pickup games and make that happen. But there's also the other side, that that's some expensive turf and all of that business that we, with the city, so.
Yeah, it's the first I'm hearing of that being a specific question, which I'm happy to look into.
Can we have the answer at the next meeting?
Sure. Frankly, if the answer is that if this city agreement really does say it's supposed to be open at all times, that's something the housing authority may want to revisit with the city, because again, that's a, could be a huge liability issue, and if we're saying there's a curfew certain hours, things like that, that would factor into it as well.
Long story short, the event on Saturday is going to be held outdoors.
Absolutely, yes. I apologize, I didn't mean to...
That was too far down the road.
Night activity.
And then I just want to add one last thing.
We're going to change it for next year, that's, this is residents, this is what they, this is what they want.
As, I reached out while we were talking about the rental assistance stuff, it's one of my contacts, and he just got back to me, there's an organization called New Jersey Shares. They, they just, they just did emergency rental assistance in Essex and Monmouth Counties, so they go from federal to county. It's the ERAP funds, so that may be something we should be looking into.
We actually work with them, they're our partners, and they don't have funding at the moment.
Through the county, through Hudson?
No, for Hudson, yeah, they don't have any, they don't have no rental assistance funding. They had, and they were helping, and it's their...
And I think we talked about that at the meeting in the past.
All right, so I'll, my contact at NJ Shares, I will reach back out to him and see if we could work an agreement somehow.
That would be great.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you.
So Director, in reference to your report, I just have something that I'd like to point out. The night time security policy, we actually approved that last month, and I was actually sorry to see that that was only shared with the residents today.
And we're sorry for that delay.
And the fact that this was not discussed at our meeting, at our resident meeting, you know, a lot of the points that we brought up today, these are all bullet points that should be brought up at those resident meetings, so that, I get it, we're not getting a lot of residents, but the residents that are there are made aware and they can bring the information back.
We agree. We did want to wait till we distributed, we talked about it at the resident meeting, and then we had some delay in distributing, so it will be discussed at the next round of meetings.
Okay, and as far as your obsolescence study, I know I reached out to you about this, the entire housing authority is going through inspections. So we all got a letter saying that inspections will be this day and this day. We did not know that when these individuals were coming to our, to the homes or to our homes, that they were taking pictures of every single room that they were entering, you know, as part of the inspection. And you know, I reached out to you personally, and I said, "I've lived here for so many years, and this has never happened," where they actually are walking from room to room, taking pictures, and I've had residents reach out to me to ask me, "Well, why is this happening?" And all I could say, "It's mandated, we have to do it through HOD," because at that point, I didn't know what, really what to say. But I think we have to do a better job at communicating with our residents what is happening and why it's happening. So sending a letter saying, "Residents, we're having an inspection on this day," is not good enough. Why didn't we just say, "Residents, as you are aware, we're in the process of redevelopment. As part of the redevelopment, we are mandated through HOD to have an obsolescence study," which requires us to do inspections of the homes. There's a possibility that they may go in there with cameras and take pictures. Note that this information will not be given with personal information to anyone else, personal identifiable information to anyone else. Because I'll be honest with you, residents were afraid. They were like, "Why are these people coming into my house and taking pictures of every, of every, every room?" And I get it, you guys are, you guys, we're the owners and we have the right to do that. But if we want to have the residents trust us, we have to have open communication, and giving them half the information is not good enough. It's not. And, and you know, I'm saying this as the Chair, I'm saying this as a resident, and I think that we have to do better. We have to do better across the board with communication to the residents. And maybe this coming year, that's one of our goals, that we set up, is better communication with the residents. I also want to point out about the maintenance issue, I know that several individuals in the public have spoken tonight about situations that have happened in the housing authority, and they made it seem as if it was disregarded. And that's not the truth. I live there, I see it, I witnesses, I get the calls all the time about it. And so, for instance, the holes that are happening in the housing authority are happening through the entire housing authority. It's not one section, it's not just this building that it's happening to, it's happening to our entire campus. I don't think there's one section of the housing authority that doesn't have those huge holes that are happening. I can assure you that maintenance does what they can with the amount of people that we have to make sure that those holes are filled. Unfortunately, our hands are tied, we can't cement it. We can't cement it, right? We've said this a thousand times. So our hands are tied, they go put the dirt today, and two days later, the holes are back, because the rodents are back in there doing the thing. So it's really unfair to sit here sometimes and just say that we are ignoring the issues. That's not the case. 560 had a hot water issue this past weekend, and within, I would say, less than 24 hours, our maintenance people were in there, fixed the issue, and no one, no one lost water. They had heat, they had hot water, although it was said that there was no hot water throughout the building. It was not true. I have a family member that lives there, they had hot water. And when the issue was being resolved the next day, they did lose water shortly, but I want to say within two, three hours, the issue was resolved on a Sunday, on a Sunday. I think we all need to keep in mind that we cannot compare what the city does to what the housing authority does. The city, I'm sure, has hundreds of maintenance people that can take care of issues that are happening. If the housing authority has five or six maintenance people that can handle these kinds of situations, it's a lot. And I think it's really unfair that we don't give them enough credit for what is done, what is done there. They are trying their best, and I am, I can be their biggest advocate, but I also hold but I also hold them to the, hold them to the fire and hold them accountable when things aren't done. So I don't want anybody to think that, oh, she's saying it because she's the chair, no, because I've sat here plenty of times and also called them out when things aren't done properly. So I just want to say to the maintenance, I know it could be disheartening, I want to say to the entire maintenance department, thank you, because you have been handling the situations to the best of the ability, and thank you, Director, because when you get a phone call, you don't get off of that call or that situation until it's resolved. So I would say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you again.
Thank you.
You guys, they do a great job. Sammy was there Sunday morning, to say I'm to make that happen, didn't have to do that. Thanks, Sammy. I think that concludes our report.
Resolution. Resolution number 20221201, resolution of the housing authority of the city of Hoboken to approve meeting minutes for November 10th, regular board meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Wait, I have a question.
Yes, sure.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
So, lazy for the meeting minutes of the last meeting?
Yes, correct, of the board meeting.
I have a question on resolution to establish the night activity policy.
Yes.
That's 202211, you said, the city council. First of all, how much time was spent on that policy? To prepare it and then bring it before the board?
I mean, it was the subject of two committee meetings, I would say, the committee meetings themselves probably were about three hours at least.
Yeah.
I mean, and then from our end, there was the draft in between, I mean, I don't know.
I would say about a month to start.
Right, I mean, I think, I mean, if you're talking about our time, there was a significant amount of time put into it, I know the members of the committee put considerable time into it. But in terms of the committee meetings themselves, I would say it was done over the course of two specific meetings totaling about three or four hours.
Okay.
About two meetings, three four hours, over the course of about a month, over this policy.
Right, with plenty of discussion, plenty of discussion.
It was about two months.
Hours of discussion, right.
Well, that segues nicely into my next question, which is, on the meeting minutes disappears as the last resolution, however, there is a missing board action slash resolution that was proposed by the chair at the end of the meeting, but it does not appear in the minutes.
That's correct.
Should we have that in the minutes?
Should be, yeah, should be in the minutes.
Yeah, but resolution was adopted, I mean, a resolution was considered, it should be in the minutes, yeah, okay.
So yeah, we can't, we can't.
We actually, we have voted on it that night, though.
No, I'm saying, we can't, we can't approve the minutes until that's put into the minutes.
But this is a synopsis, is that in the regular meeting minutes?
Well, so that'll be in the transcript, but what the commissioner was pointing out is, it should be reflected that board action was taken one way or another, or was considered one way or another, so that should be reflected in the minutes, and that's a valid point. I think it would be appropriate if the commissioner wanted to make a motion to table this.
There's another question I have related to this, because Commissioner Russo left before the last resolution was voted upon, and he recorded his vote with the director, so he is completely presumably unaware of this resolution.
You were on the phone.
No, I was on the phone. I participated in all the discussion, and right before the vote, before the official vote, I recognized, I was recognized and I recorded my vote.
On the night activity policy?
Yeah, on that, yes.
On the night activity policy?
Yes.
But not on the resolution that Chair Reyes presented after you left?
It was the resolution that if any commissioner was to put anything out in public, that they had to, had.
I participated in that conversation.
You did?
Yeah.
I didn't hear, yeah, while I was on the phone, so I wasn't an active participant in every, every word, but I participated in that conversation about it, and I registered my vote before I got off the phone.
I think because I was part of the manager, I heard you, because I'm the closest to the TV, so I could validate.
Yeah, I saw where your vote was.
It was yeah.
I voted yes.
I voted yes. So, are you, you think this is a good policy? Is this going to apply to you as well?
Of course, he's a commissioner.
Apply, I mean, what, this, this policy that was presented?
He's talking about the policy, okay, I think that there's some.
What policy are you talking about?
He's speaking about the last policy that we put in place on the last meeting, where we asked that if any commissioner puts anything out in public, that you do not put it out as you are representing this board, you put it out as an individual, as a resident, or a help member?
That's suggested disclaimer language, sorry.
Yeah, why would that not apply to me? Why would we concern?
I had no idea what your opinion on was, I didn't hear you, so I'm asking you now what your opinion on, because you are.
Yeah, I'm absolutely supportive of that.
And so you're gonna write a disclaimer when you make public statements? Is that?
Pretending to the housing authority, of course.
What about the city council?
Has nothing to do.
Well, does my city council position have anything to do with that?
Well, I would, for lack of a better way of saying this, what's good for the youth should be good for the gander, and the city council is in charge.
James, I have no problem going down this road, but are you prepared to go down this road?
Are you prepared?
I'm just asking you a simple question, I'm gonna answer your question, okay? I have never, in my time on this board, started a statement to the public as a housing authority commissioner, I, fill in the blanks, okay? I have never done that, I will never do that. As a matter of fact, I sit on this board, and I say very little in comparison to my role as a city councilman. I, I have no problem, no problem going down this road. I always defer to the chair, I always defer to the vice chair, to the director, and our council, okay? What you do not do is run those things that you do outside of this board past our council, and that's why you got yourself in hot water. That is the situation.
What hot water?
You have represented yourself as a commissioner of this authority.
When?
To send, to send out a communication that was your personal opinion and want. This authority has never said to any candidate in any election, at any time, that they cannot and should not knock on someone's door to advocate for their office. That is not, that is not a policy of this, of this board, that is your personal preference, and you represented as a commissioner of this authority, and you put each and every one of us in a bad situation, including the authority as a whole. Okay? So now, we have all, we have all done our best to give you as much coverage as possible, because if you want my opinion, I'm gonna give it to you now. I think that you are absolutely wrong in what you did, and I think that you do not do anything to further the agenda of this authority to represent the people who live here. Okay? Now, you wanted to go down this road, you asked for this, and I gave you the opinion you wanted, and that is my opinion. You sit there, you don't vote on resolutions, you abstain on things that have no basis for you to abstain on. An abstention means that you have a conflict, it does not mean that you are coward enough to vote on something. That is what happens when you, absolutely.
Exactly.
Absolutely. Those votes are cowardice, because you do not want to vote on something, because you personally disagree with it. That's not the way we do business.
Guys, can we please keep it as respectful as possible?
I apologize, Madam Chair, but I asked him if he wanted to go down the road, and he said he did.
So, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
At the last meeting, it was ambiguous as to what precipitated your resolution. According to Commissioner Russo, it was whatever I had allegedly written, correct?
Yes, that's.
So the resolution was specifically borne because of what I had written?
It was not only, it was, first of all, that was an issue that came off because of what you had written, and we felt so that we are not put in a position like this, the best thing to do was to put something, a policy on the books that states that if you as a commissioner have every right, or as a resident, to say what you'd like to say, when you'd like to say it, but do, do not state it as if you are representing this board. Because I, as a chair, and Erica as a vice chair, would never put anything out without bringing it to each and every one of your attentions. And I think I do a very good job at what I do when I come here, because I, here as a resident, and when I say something that's personal, I clearly state to everyone in this thing, I'm not talking to you as a commissioner, I'm talking to you as a resident. And we just felt that what was said, because of what transpired, because of what was made public, it was a public knowledge, it was on social media, it was everywhere, came to our attention, that, yes, we did need to put a policy in place so that this no longer happens.
So you felt it was, and it was a we decision?
I'm sorry, it was a what decision?
It was a we decision, based on what Chair Sam. At what point did all of you discuss this proposed policy?
Well, I took that upon myself as a chair to put this policy in place, because when that happened, and it was put on social media, the individual who were receiving the calls and the information were probably, I want to say, myself, I don't know, Erica, I believe, and I also believe that, and I don't want to speak for you, councilman.
Don't worry, I'll speak for myself.
But the councilmen, it was brought to our attention, and we brainstormed and thought of a way where we can prevent this from happening again as a board. Again, I stated to you, this was nothing specifically to, to target you, that wasn't the case, this is something that is going to apply to every single commissioner on this board.
Well, that is what this is.
Madam Chair, may I?
Start as respectful as possible.
Your own company, same time.
Correct.
Madam Chair, may, so yes, this is done, we talked about it, we, our, our job is to represent the chair and the vice chair, and I'm sorry if I'm speaking.
No, that's fine, you can.
We speak, when we do things, we do things for the benefit of the authority, I, councilman is everywhere, I am everywhere, very rarely do you ever hear me say, Erica from 9,000 organizations. It's because you're protecting your organizations that you represent, and this is gonna stand for everybody, Aaron's said every board in America, it's protection. If you want to speak, nobody's saying that you cannot speak, you cannot speak for the board. And in that capacity, 100%, I felt, we felt you were speaking for the board, that's against you, that can't, that can't.
Wait a second, let me.
That can't happen in the future, if you want to.
You represented yourself as a commissioner.
We have been trying to, to bridge the gap between the community and the board, and it's not been a very easy thing, and we're not trying to attack anybody. The board is the job, the responsibility of the board to, to be an oversight of the, and assist hood, and be an oversight of the director. We cannot get on other people's business, it's not our job. So we're just using that as protection to make sure we do not get into anybody else's business. Thank you.
Commissioner Seitzman, I have to disagree. Commissioner Russo just attacked me by calling me a coward. This, you can say that this resolution does not, applies to everybody, but it is specifically applying to me, it was born to target me.
It's applied because of something that was sent by a, by a commissioner in public, it was public knowledge, you never, James, the, the truth of the matter is that you have the right to say whatever you want to say. At our last meeting, I did it as respectfully as I could to speak to you without putting what was happening out in the public. I did everything I could, including not letting individuals speak, so that no one felt attacked, so that no one felt as if, if, if we were being targeted. I did everything possible at that last meeting, okay? And when I stated the resolution, I still did not identify you as the cause of the resolution happening, but as chair and vice chair, I think that we have the right to come, when we see something in public that we think it may affect us as commissioners, that it may, may affect this board, this authority, we have the right to, to make a determination to say to the director and to the lawyer, do we have the right to come up with a policy so that something like this does not happen again, whether it's, it's Michael that does it, Commissioner Russo, or Erica that does it? And we were told we had that right to do that, and we went, we moved forward and did it.
So why did none of you speak to me?
Everyone has spoken to you, James. Time out, excuse me, Madam Chair, everyone has spoken to you, board members have reached out to you, board members have asked you why you act the way you do as a commissioner, why you don't vote on resolutions, why you don't participate in the things that we ask you to participate, everyone has done that. No one has publicized that, James, because everyone on this board felt it, felt that it was the right thing to do to give you that coverage and protect you as a fellow commissioner. But the reality is, you came here tonight with a very specific purpose, all right? And you came here to ask me specifically about what I do as a councilman, not for any other reason, but to try to paint me with some type of a broad brush, okay? And I warned you and asked you if you wanted to go down the road, and you very simply said yes. So now we're down the road, and now you have to answer for the things that you've done.
What have I done?
You have represented this board without the authority. End of story.
Sir? Okay, guys.
It's not the James, we have residents, we have policies.
Exactly, we have residents here.
I have a question for.
There's too much, we're talking about this too much, this is way too much. The residents are the important part of this entire meeting, we have agenda, we have all these resolutions, we don't have time for this nonsense, I'm sorry. We've talked way too much about it, it needs, if you have a motion to put it on the minutes, we can vote on it, if not, let's, let's get it going, let's move it along.
He has a question for the lawyer, I'm gonna let you have this question, I'm gonna let you ask this, and this will be the last time that this is discussed, I will no further. After this meeting, or any other meeting, go back to addressing this issue, the policy, or anything else.
Thank you.
James, could you ask the lawyer?
Counselor, based on answers to questions that I've received tonight, it would appear that the board discussed matters of a resolution that took board action without following the sunshine law.
Absolutely incorrect.
To my knowledge, the action that the board took as a whole was taken at the last meeting, based on a motion from the floor, which is perfectly acceptable.
Okay. Well, I just want to have on the record that I do think it was a violation of the sunshine accord.
Three is now the quorum. I'm sorry, James, I have to.
Okay, resolution number 20221201, how are we standing? Are we voting? Would we like to put a motion?
What was that, the minutes?
Yes, the minutes?
Motion has amended.
There's a question whether the minutes are accurate.
So we need a motion to amend them, right?
Yes, a motion to, well, I mean, you don't need to, this is a resolution, so you would just make a motion for the minutes as amended and discussed at the meeting, adding that one last resolution in vote, that's it.
That would be fine, you could make a motion to table if that was the preference, either one would be appropriate.
We could make sure we go back and word it right and bring it back to the next meeting.
Okay.
And that would be fine.
Okay, so motion to table.
You rather table it?
No, I, I don't.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Whatever your preference is.
Motion to table.
Sorry, it's not in here, and I would like to make sure it's right.
Okay, so then table it, and then we can vote on it on our next meeting.
So is there a motion to table?
Motion.
Second.
Erica and James, Director?
Anthony Forbes, oh, by the way, Anthony Forbes.
Yes, yes.
He's on Zoom.
He's right here.
Yeah, Anthony Forbes.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes.
Anthony Forbes?
Yes, table.
Andrew Mustado?
Yes.
Aaron Lewis?
Yes.
Barbara Riz?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Hi.
Jane Sanford?
Yes, to table.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes. Resolution number 20221202, resolution authorizing the payment of monthly list of bills for the Hoboken Housing Authority.
Motion.
Second.
Madam, if I could ask one question, the one question I have is number 13 in monthly administrative expenses, the annual site remediation fee for Mama Johnson, is that gonna be split 50/50 with the city of Hoboken?
There's not.
I, I think it should, right? Because they, they share in the use agreement 50/50, am I right?
Yeah.
Or are we just, we're incurring all the costs and they get to use it 50/50?
If I, if I remember correctly from the city side, I think in the agreement, because of the, how it was funded, we have the, the shared services agreement, which I think encumbers us for maintenance, am I correct on that?
Yeah, and, and I think, we can certainly look back at the agreement on this, Commissioners, but, but the city does an awful lot there, and, you know, we, we should be doing a lot of the general maintenance, we do the daily stuff, we do the small stuff, we do the cleaning, and if there's anything major, the city usually steps in and doesn't ask for.
Reimbursement.
Reimbursement.
Oh, yeah, let's just go take a look and see if.
I didn't think it was a 50/50 shared, like, when the Mama Johnson Field was built back 2012, 2013, 2012 was finished, the city provided a cumulative total of $600,000, but everything[1789.33] of $600,000, but everything above that, the authority paid for, and they're basically, they had basically the first priority on usage of it, but it has been our responsibility to cover the maintenance. This came about as a result of, I guess there was some historic fill or something that was discovered as part of the construction, and then so the, the environmental protection said, we've got to pay this remediation fee for, I don't recall the term.
Because the only thing that I foresee is a liability, if we're paying for 100% of these type of things, if something happens, are we 100% liable for it? So let's just say the field has a hole in it and a kid breaks his leg, God forbid, you know, are we now, where's it 50/50 with the city? You see?
We've actually been through one or two of those suits before, and we actually had those discussions about who had seen it and who had done it, and the city more, quite a bit more the responsible.
Are you guys known, so I'm just asking, you know, if you think it's, you know, we should take the expense.
But I think we ought to, but I also think I would like to take a look at the agreement. I think a fresh look at the agreement would not hurt.
Thanks.
There's a document elsewhere, too.
That's it. For me.
Director, welcome.
Anthony Forbes?
Yes.
Andrew Bastado?
Yes.
Aaron Lewit?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes. Resolution number 20221203, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to award a contract for the maintenance and servicing of boilers and associated mechanical equipment.
Motion.
Second.
Questions? Ten seconds.
I will say that the one comment I have is to Manny's point about, you know, contractors and donations, we do have a procurement committee, Manny, that overlooks all those policies and, and things like that, they score it, there's a very important process that is not overlooked, to, to your point, to your question.
Oh, and now I think, may I? I believe HUD has to approve the contract. After the procurement committee went through it, they have to go and also review to make sure that everything is in proper order.
Erica, you are, Commissioner, you are absolutely right, except not for long, because I want to, I want to brag a little bit, because I should have said it, we, we were, we had audit findings for years before I got here on improper contracting, improper use of funds. We have not had an audit finding for four solid years, and HUD has just contacted me saying they're going to take the requirement for HUD contract review off of us, starting probably next month. We're going to get a letter from them, which means we've impressed them so much with, I'll just brag, it's true, we have not had any audit findings, we have had no lawsuits, we have had no issues with our bidding, our bidding has been audited time and time again on how we review our contracts, how we process our contracts, and I'm incredibly proud of that with our staff, because they trust us so much now that they're putting us back on that higher level of saying, we trust you, you guys do your thing. So, yay, that's going to happen very soon.
We had that one audit finding, not the version of all.
But that's not on purchasing, not on purchasing.
Oh, okay.
It's not on, on any of our purchasing procedures.
Sorry, sorry.
Why are you trying to, why are you trying to throw a damper on it?
I'm not, I'm not.
It is, it's something to comment about, it is.
Good job.
Emily, you know, he's pushed, he's played lead on that, making sure.
Thank you.
Nothing gets through that, man, that it's not bid correctly or done correctly, so we appreciate that. And myself, by the way, we're serious about it.
Cool.
So thank you. Okay.
Motion.
Second.
We made it.
I already did that already.
Just a vote.
Anthony Forbes?
Yes.
Andrew Bastado?
Yes.
Aaron Lewit?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes. Resolution number 20221204, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to award a contract for the maintenance and service of the fire protection systems.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns, comments? Director?
Anthony Forbes?
Yes.
Andrew Bastado?
Yes.
Aaron Lewit?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes. Resolution number 20221205, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to award a contract for fee accounting service.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns, comments? Director?
Anthony Forbes?
Yes.
Andrew Bastado?
Yes.
Aaron Lewit?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes? Yes.
We got you.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
Yes.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes. Resolution number 20221207, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to award a contract for general engineering services, award one.
Motion.
Second.
I think we skipped fiscal audit. Might as well vote on that first.
There hasn't been, there hasn't been a motion in the second, so if you want to go back.
So I missed, what, 1206?
Yeah.
1206, yeah.
Am I wrong?
No, we, yeah, we motioned in the second.
I voted on 1207, I didn't get that.
Okay, I'm sorry, my apologies. So a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to award contract for general engineering services, award one, and it was motioned by Commissioner Russo and second by Seitzman. Questions, concerns, comments?
I would just like to note real quickly that this is the first time we, we're going to be awarding to two general engineering firms, because that will give us a choice of which one to use. We don't have to just use one firm, so we will have two in our pocket to go ahead and use them. What's that? So, he says it's.